Self. Yeah Keith, your name is Anita Caseman, you need to change that.
Okay, so the room is now open, I just want to give it a minute for everybody to trickle in.
If you click, if you bring your mouse over to your picture Keith and you hit, there's three little dots at the top right.
Right click on your face image, right click on your face image, don't click on it, right click on it.
Oh, I'm on my phone too, so.
Oh Joe, can you change his name?
Or make me an admin, I'll do it.
Classic, classic.
John, you know, you got the whole community talking about you on the treadmill, you're like the running joke.
Good, they, what they need to do is, they need to start a pool on guessing how many steps I do.
Oh, that's a nice one.
And the donation goes, you know, the food bank or something.
I like it. To keep things interesting.
The other day I hit, oh yeah, for the joint, the upper Bucks that night, Monday.
Yeah.
I hit over fifty thousand steps.
What? It's insane. How do you do it?
And should I tell you that it's barefoot too?
No way.
Way.
Really? That's not uncomfortable?
You have to build up your tolerance, but it's actually, it's, you know, it's better for your arches.
Eh.
Like, there's even people that do barefoot running because it's, you know, you have stronger, stronger feet.
Yeah.
Instead of being weakened.
So being from the south does have advantages. We like to be barefoot, you know, just to joke.
I won't, yeah, I'm not touching that one.
You know better.
Yeah, it doesn't work so well if it's icy cold out.
Alright, we're gonna give some time, um, people are still trickling in here.
Keith is Keith now.
Okay.
Keith, you at the hospital?
Oh Brian, you're back, you're good.
No, I just got in, I'm, uh, just grabbing a little quick bite because I thought this thing started at seven, so I reread my email, so. Not only do we have a meeting, but it started early, thank you Kayla.
You know what, you, you just hush. You're welcome, by the way. Okay Jenny's trying to get in, so let me.
Dr. Damsker, I thought I saw the cases dropped today for the first time in a little bit.
Um, yeah, every day, every day goes up and down a little bit because Quest is sort of the bear right now because they dump cases on random days because, you know, they're, they're still behind. But, you know, we'll see anywhere, we could see anywhere between twenty-one and sixty cases a day depending on how they come in, that's why. The most important thing to look at is onset date, not the case report date, that's why it's very, the case report date means nothing, the onset date of the cases will be looked at. But the state likes to, the state likes to report case report date, that's all they have, but when you're actually doing the work. You can, you can get the onset date out of people and that's what you look at. Because sometimes we get a case where their onset date was, you know, July first. And we don't get the report till today, so, you know, it doesn't mean that there's any problem from a month ago, so it's, it's a whole. It's, the, the case report date is totally different than the case onset date, that's what we look at here is onset date.
Yeah, I was, I was tracking the CDC weekly report data for each week and the July, I think like the July fourth between that and the July eleventh. Mysteriously twenty-two hundred cases appeared ten weeks earlier in April. You know, so you still saw this weird balloon suddenly on, on one week's report, and then the next week's report. That, that blob of, kind of like they filled in the curve and that blob moved to the, the end of the month and it's like. I think the problem is, nobody ever looked at this data this closely before. And it's, you know, there's all kinds of integration issues getting, you know, garbage in, garbage out, and yeah, it's pretty rough to.
I mean, I was certified today that one of the nursing homes, I won't say which, you know, they, there was about twenty-some cases, they never reported to us back from April. So we're gonna have to, so when we get those cases, we're gonna have to report those as, as cases, whatever day we get them, whether it's tomorrow, the next day. And if April has nothing to do with today and it's, uh, but it's gonna bump up our case number for that day.
Well, yeah, and that's the, that's the flaw, right, is, is you get this, these, these, it's actually only three hundred new cases, but it looks like three thousand, yeah, and it's, yeah.
Jenny's about to join us guys, um, thank you all for your patience, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Give her maybe just a quick second. And then.
I go off video every once in a while, take a bite of bratwurst, so, in case you wonder.
We're, we're gonna be paying close attention. Alright, um. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and knowing that Jenny should be joining us briefly. So we'll start with the flag salute and Joe, you wanna get us a flag going here? Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alright Anita, would you like to take the roll call please?
Mr. Jackson.
I'm here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz. Ms. Weed. Mr. McCucci.
I'm here.
Mr. Reimers.
Say something, Mr. Reimers.
Might be muted, I saw him, he's here.
Yeah.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Alright. The only announcement I have is that this meeting is being recorded by the board secretary. So thank you all for joining us at this special meeting tonight, tonight we feature Dr. Damsker. He's the director of the Bucks County Health Department. And afterwards, we're gonna update you on some great work, some of the great work that lifespan has been doing during the spring and summer and the plans to support. Our district, their plans to support our district before and after cares, and we have a couple of items that are on the agenda, but other than that, it's a pretty light agenda. So on Monday, we hosted a tour for Dr. Damsker of the high school in Quaker Town Elementary. And attendance were myself, Dr. Harner. Rob, I, I think I'm always gonna butcher your name, it's Chris Stein, is that correct, the correct, correct way to say that? Thumbs up?
Yes, that's fine.
Oh, he said that's fine, okay. And the principals from each school, Chris Spear was in attendance as well as Dave from the board. And Joe from QE was a really great help, he walked the halls and observed some common areas that students will be moving within. We also spent a good amount of time in a few classrooms that were pre-staged at three feet, four and a half feet, five feet, as well as six feet of separation. We toured the science lab in the high school and the gym and in QE as well. During our time in the classrooms, we corrected some of the initial spacing to reflect, reflect the proper distance, then tested some of the configurations. We determined that three feet of separation will not be needed to accommodate our students in the classroom. It felt really tight, we really weren't comfortable with that. The distances of four and a half, five and even six feet should work depending on our enrollment demand. In fact, I, I feel pretty good about saying I think we can get pretty close to that, but of course, we're gonna have to wait for those enrollment numbers to come back. The way that we were distancing it prior to when we went to the schools was six feet from desk to desk. And instead, we did it six feet from person to person, that does make a pretty significant difference. Dr. Damsker oversaw and assisted us in the reconfigurations and felt comfortable recommending those configurations for us to bring our students and staff back into the buildings, I'm sure he'll speak to that. We'd like to thank everyone from Dr. Damsker, Dr. Harner, the entire facility staff, and the building administrators for helping us stage these rooms. For us and showing us how the real world spacing options will look, and we'll show you some pictures that we took later on in the meeting. Uh, I do want to set the stage a little bit, we normally have public comment occur in the beginning of the meeting and we're actually going to. We're gonna keep public comment to the end of the meeting this time, but, but rest assured, I did go through every single question that we had. And our public comments, and I did incorporate that into the questions that we're gonna be asking Dr. Damsker. We have a limited amount of time with him, we really appreciate the time that he's dedicating to us considering I know he's working really hard right now, especially right now. So I've compiled that list of questions, I'm gonna try to get through as many as I can, if we do have some time, I want to open it up to the other board members, although. I've compiled their questions as well, I've compiled questions from public comment, from our teachers' union, from the community and from board members, so we do have quite a few to go through. So I'm gonna do my best to facilitate this discussion, if we have time, like I said afterwards, we'll try to briefly let board members ask direct questions. So with that, welcome, Dr. Damsker, thanks for being with us tonight. Why don't we start off by you telling us a little bit about yourself, your medical background, what your focus has been as the health director with Bucks County? As well as your qualifications in regards to infectious diseases and, and let us know, have you handled infectious diseases outbreaks in the past?
Yeah, thank you Kayla, and I appreciate it, um, I've been doing public health for about twenty years. Uh, I did a residency in public health and general medicine at, down at Tulane University in New Orleans. I went to medical school at Hahnemann, yeah, exactly, which is now, I guess, Drexel University School of Medicine. Uh, I received my masters of public health at Tulane as well. Um, and I've been doing public health for about twenty years and I've been involved with things all the way back from the, um, from mosquito borne outbreaks that they've had in Louisiana. In, in the early two thousands, uh, we had the first SARS outbreak, uh, I led the charge here with H1N1. Uh, here in Bucks County, we gave tens of thousands of doses in every school district. Uh, we, on a regular basis, we handle measles, mumps, pertussis, um, chickenpox, and about thirty other diseases people haven't even heard of. There's, there's seventy reportable diseases here in Bucks County, uh, or in the state of Pennsylvania. Of course, recently, we were handling the Ebola crisis. My department was much more involved with Ebola than people realized, there was people coming from countries in Africa that we had to monitor daily for many, many months. People didn't realize how long the response was lasting. But yeah, a lot of, a big part of my job is dealing with infectious disease outbreaks here in Bucks County on a regular basis. Um, and of course, this, this, the, uh, the coronavirus nineteen outbreak is clearly, uh, the most, in a lot of ways, the most difficult and challenging one we've had. Because it is obviously a relatively, you know, a new strain of, of, we deal with coronaviruses all the time. But this is a different kind of coronavirus with regard to what it can do to people and, and, and it's, it's sort of a worst case virus in a lot of ways because it's. It can go all the way from no symptoms all the way to putting someone on a ventilator, so it's a very, uh, it's a very interesting yet, uh, difficult disease to deal with, so. That's just, I guess, the kind of way I do want to get into, so what was happening here in Bucks County, or let me know what you want to talk about, because it's, there's so much that we can go into.
We have a lot, we have a lot, um, so before we get into the questions, I know that you have children yourself. And some people wanted to know, do you feel safe sending your kids to school and are you opting for your children to return back to school?
Uh, yes, um, I, I have three daughters, uh, in the Central Bucks School District. They, they, their model is for the element, for the elementary education, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask my youngest to go back to school full-time. And at the secondary level, they have a hybrid model, which I'll be, um, placing my older two daughters in, in that model. I do understand that there's, you know, that there's a lot of opinions out there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um. You know, fear in people and I get that, um, you know, and I, but I do believe that, uh, the districts are all offering, you know, either, whether it's in-person or hybrid, there's an in-person type model and there's also a virtual model. And I think by offering both of those types of things, that allows any family to make the decision that's best for their family.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So, as you mentioned, we do have a lot of anxiety with families, with teachers, staff, about returning to a school environment, so. Yes, can you tell us a little bit about what you've learned about this virus, how it's transmitted? How is it specifically affecting our local community and do you feel like it's controlled in our local community?
Yeah, it, it's, it's definitely like, it, it spreads similarly to the flu virus, which is a droplet spread. This is when someone is coughing, sneezing, um, you know, and, and someone is, is close by to them. And those droplets get on your hands, get on your eyes, nose, or mouth. Uh, and then, you know, sometimes it gets to your hands, you rub, you rub your eye, you might, you know, eat something, uh, you might touch something, you know, there, the, the CDC has kind of gone back and forth a little bit on whether you could touch a table and get it. And, um, we believe that you can get it from touching surfaces, uh, the virus can last. Uh, I'm, we're not sure whether that's the majority of the way people are getting it, but, uh, we've had, we had one case where someone didn't touch anything but a gas pump. Um, and the person literally didn't go anywhere, didn't do anything, didn't talk to anybody, but touched the gas pump. So it clearly can be spread on, on surfaces, we don't know just how far, but that's why, you know, cleaning services is obviously a major part of, of our response. What I can tell you here in Bucks County is that we had, overall, we had a large spike, you know, mid to late April through early May. Many of those cases unfortunately weren't our long-term care facilities where we had, um, some deaths, we had a lot of deaths in those facilities. And this disease clearly, um, has a major impact on those that are, that are, those are especially bedridden, those are long-term care facilities, these are our most fragile citizens. Um, and, and, and it made it into those facilities, um, many times, many of which, you know, happened because, you know, employees back in the early days. They might say, oh, I don't have a fever, I must not have coronavirus, and they go into work and, and we know that the employees did bring it into some of those facilities. But we, we came down, you know, obviously, we were in the red zone for a long time, as everyone on this call is very aware. And, um, you know, over time, the cases, we went up high, we came back down. Uh, and I, and I was saying this from the very beginning, that once we moved into the yellow and then again the green. You know, we're opening all businesses, right, almost every business is open, um, that, that can be open, even if they're in a, in a controlled or restricted fashion. And, you know, everyone's out and about, so, you know, the, the idea that we have a few more cases than we did at the very bottom, uh, makes a lot more sense. So if we have an average of forty cases a day today versus twenty, you know, cases a day at our lowest. Uh, we feel like we're sort of at a plateau now where we have this, um, there's, there's a baseline number of cases here in Bucks County, we'll probably be there. Uh, for a while until a vaccine comes out or something else happens to change that. What I can tell you is, in the, uh, the municipalities that make up Quaker Town School District, right now, we have twenty-seven active cases in those five municipalities. Uh, with Milford, Hancock, Quaker Town Borough, Richland Township, and, uh, maybe there's six, Trump Bowersville and, um, uh, Richland Town. But I believe there's, there's twenty-seven active cases right now in the entire school district. Now, of course, there's more than that most likely, because not everybody gets tested. You know, and, and not everybody, you know, feels the need, because some people, a lot of people don't have major symptoms, or they know that their wife had it. And they know they probably have it, so they don't want to go get swabbed, which is not a pleasant experience depending on where you go. But overall, I would say the upper part of the county, um, has the least number of cases, you know, as opposed to the middle or the lower part of the county. And that is obviously in, in Quaker Town's favor. The, the population density is a little bit lower in the upper end of the county, it is, and there's portions that are crowded, but certainly relative to the lower end of the county, it's less crowded, and I think that. Everyone, you know, walking around, people are wearing masks, people are doing the things they need to do. Uh, and, and overall, um, you know, as I said, we're, we're sort of at a plateau, it's a higher plateau than we were when everyone was in their houses. Where everybody is sort of, and yeah, there, there's a good graph.
I'm gonna go ahead and share this data with, uh, that, yeah, hold on one second, we get to.
And that graph, that graph is done by onset date, I want to explain to everybody on this call, the difference between onset date versus the case report date. The case report date, like, so let's say today, we had fifty cases today at the health department. Some of those cases were old, some of those cases may have had an onset date in June, in July, but we were just made aware of them today. So we have to report them to the state and publicly today. But the onset date of that case, the, the first day that person felt symptoms. You know, that's what, that's what, that's the most important part of an Epi curve, an epidemiology curve shows the onset date. It's like, it's like, you know, if you go to a wedding or you hear about the stories, oh, there's a bunch of people with diarrhea or vomiting at a wedding. You, you don't look at what day the case is reported, because that could be a week or two later, you look at what day the onset, so you, you look, okay, after a wedding, one day, twelve people got sick, two days later, four people got sick. You don't say, well, the cases were all reported two weeks later, so that's when they all got sick, right, you look at the actual onset of those, of the symptoms. So this graph shows how we had a large spike, uh, and you can see that the, the, the individual, um, columns are the actual numbers of cases we reported that day. But that, the, the line that you show is sort of the overall trend line that you can do on Excel. And it shows we had a major spike, uh, you know, earlier in the, in the, uh, in the pandemic, we came down. Uh, and then slowly, we became, came up, once we went to yellow and green, uh, and people were out and about a little bit more, you can see why, um, you know, those cases went up. But I think everybody understands that common sense says that the more people that are out and about, the more likely to get cases. And the, the bottom part of this graph, you can see the number of deaths. And, you know, the vast majority of those deaths, as I said earlier, we're in our nursing care facilities or long-term care facilities. And you can see, since we've gotten that problem under control, and they're doing things like, you know, everyone is being tested in these facilities like every week, you know, all the staff members are being tested, all the residents. So we've been able to keep it out of our, out of our long-term care facilities, uh, for the most part since that outbreak. And you can see the deaths obviously are way down. And that's what happens, once you get, once you get this virus into the non-long-term care population, the death rate goes way, way, way down. And, you know, there's been no deaths in Bucks County of anyone under thirty. Uh, and the few people that have been younger, I know, they've had, some of them have very severe underlying conditions, doesn't negate how tragic it is obviously. But it does show that, um, that for the most part, uh, you know, it certainly is not affecting the children in schools. Uh, and I understand, you know, there's been, and we can get into that later about, you know, how that could affect other people, but clearly, um, children, uh, you know, have a much better outcome from this disease. And that's been shown, uh, you know, time and time again.
Thank you, I'm gonna go to the next one. Why won't it let me go?
By the way, while Kayla's doing that, Dr. Damsker, if I might, when you mentioned, uh, cases being, like, like tests happening multiple times in the nursing homes. Does, does that cause double, triple, like, does that add a data point for a positive each time?
No, 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 um, if, if someone is tested, you know, on January or July first, they're positive, they're tested again on July eighth and still positive, they only count once for our numbers.
Okay, good.
Alright, here's the next slide.
And this is community spread, so we, we define, the definition of community spread is when we have no idea where the person got sick. So we, we do contact tracing on every case in Bucks County, we try to figure out, you know, where they've been, who they've been in contact with, we try to figure out where they got it from, that's. And then obviously, talk to any close contacts and, and let them know, um, if they need to quarantine or get tested or whatever the situation may be. And you can see here, we started off with, and again, the community spread in general did go up, but the number, the overall numbers aren't that high. Because we can, it's, it's actually, when you take the time to call people and figure out where they got it from, a lot of times, they can say, you know, I ended up, uh, I was in a car with someone who told me to test it positive, so we know, we know how they, they got sick. And well, we can keep that under control, uh, in as little number as possible, it doesn't mean that there's not spread in the community. But pure community spread is defined as not knowing, and, and it took a while, uh, for that to, to bump up. The first few weeks of this outbreak, we were able to basically pinpoint, or this person came back from Spain, or this person came from China, or this person, you know, hung out with someone who came from Spain. And then we slowly worked our way up to saying, person said, I didn't go anywhere that I know of, all I went to do, I went to the grocery store. And that's, we still consider those to be pure community spread, where they don't know anyone who was sick, they haven't been around anybody, you know, at work. Sometimes we have work outbreaks where, you know, multiple people at an office get sick. And they know they work somewhere, they're told, okay, you know, Bob, Fred, and Joe all had a disease in, in that shop where I work. And so we know where they got it from, now again, it doesn't mean they're not cases, they all count as cases, but when those numbers start to go up, where we can't figure out where they got it, that's how we know the virus is circulating in the, in the community more. And that it's not just people that know where they got it, so that's the sort of the definition of pure community spread, and you can see that we had a little bump. After Fourth of July, and, and there's no question in my mind, and we've done the contact tracing, the case investigations, that once the summer hit, once people were out and about in green. Uh, we've had a lot of cases of people going to the Jersey Shore, we've had a lot of cases of people going to Fourth of July parties, uh, and that, that's a real thing. And, you know, I, I wish I could tell people, going to someone's house, just because you know them, uh, you know where you're going, it doesn't mean that COVID, COVID doesn't know the difference whether you're friends or not. And I think it's really important to remember, uh, that, that you go into someone's house, when there's alcohol involved or whatever the situation is, you know, still try to maintain your social distance. If you're outside, keep that six feet distance, because we've seen people saying, well, I'm going to my friend Bob's house, you know, for a big party, I can't get COVID there because I know Bob, right? And, and it's interesting that those, those things have actually caused more problems in a lot of ways than, you know, people randomly getting it at Target, you know, we just don't, it, it's, it's actually more from people. You know, thinking that they're in a comfortable situation, uh, and that's where they end up getting it sometimes, so we want people to focus on those kinds of places. You can still hang out with your friends and, and do things, but be smart when you do it. Um, and then the, uh, I think there's, you said you wanted me to look at, there's one more graph, and this is the final graph, and it just kind of, it just kind of captures everything I said. Earlier about, you know, the, the deaths being in the older population. You can see all the way on the right, you know, that the, the people that are ninety years and older, they only account for, you know, six or seven percent, whatever that number is. But they were thirty-plus percent of the deaths, and that the eighty to eighty-nine people were, you know, more than a third of the deaths in Bucks County, but they were only ten percent of the cases. Um, and as you get younger, the cases, the deaths and the hospitalizations go way down relative to the number of cases that they have. Uh, and we've seen that, and this is another thing I want to go, this is really, really important, and we'll get into this I'm sure later too. The numbers of hospitalizations that we have right now, about twenty. And that's the same number we had way back, even before we closed school in mid-March, we're doing really, really well with hospitalization, so even though we've had this spike in cases. Our hospitalization numbers have, have remained the same or low. I speak to our hospitals every single week, uh, and not one hospital, um, is, is stressed about COVID, and I mean stressed as in the numbers of COVID they have. We have several hospitals that have either zero or one COVID patient in their entire hospital.
Twenty in the whole county, you're saying?
Correct, twenty, and that's, actually, it's even less, because twenty pa, twenty Bucks County residents are in the hospital right now, that includes even hospitals outside of Bucks County. So there's even less than twenty patients that are hospitalized in Bucks County right now. But there are a few residents that, you know, it could be a Temple or Abington or places on the outside of the county. So our hospitals are not feeling the strain from COVID right now. Some of the hospitals, obviously, they're getting a little bit busier with normal stuff, you know, people are finally getting out and about, they feel comfortable leaving their homes and getting things done. And another thing that I want to mention that, uh, you know, that they, the hospitals, a lot of them are doing pre-surgery testing and pre-operation testing and things. And we're not seeing a ton of people turning positive, we see it as about one percent. So that shows you that there's not a ton of virus just circulating in random people everywhere. Uh, we do know that there's more cases than what we have confirmed, we're about one percent, you know, we're over one percent of our county has now gotten COVID and, and, um, so, you know, that's about sixty-two hundred and eighty, because there's six hundred and twenty-eight thousand people in the county. But, um, what that tells you is that, uh, you know, they're doing pre, pre-exposure, pre-surgery and pre-procedure testing, and they're not getting a lot of positives, which is another good sign. So overall, again, the hospitalizations are low, and I can't emphasize that enough, that was why Governor Wolf, you know, did the stay-at-home order at the beginning, right? They didn't want the hospitals to be overwhelmed. And right now, knock on wood, uh, I totally don't want to jinx anything, uh, but even with our, even with our bump up to the average of, you know, forty or so cases a day. Our hospitals are not being stressed at all, and some of them don't have any COVID patients in them.
How many, how many patients have we had, uh, who are children throughout this time that have been hospitalized?
I believe there's been, there was one or two, uh, and one of them was a newborn who was put in there after they, they, they were a little, they were, they were, they were infected by their mother. Uh, and they were just being careful and they kept the baby in the hospital for a day, uh, and there was one other person that was in the hospital, uh, and they were, I believe they had it for one night. So we really have, we have had, uh, no serious illnesses in children so far, and we've been lucky. Clearly, they, children can be seriously ill in, in rare situations, and you've seen that if you look across the country, um, but here in Bucks County, we haven't seen that.
Okay, great, that's good to know, it's a little, it's definitely promising. I mean, we, we feel, it, it's so unfortunate for anyone who has to be in that scenario, but it's good to hear that, that's not a huge issue, at least right now in our county. So let's talk social distancing, this is a big question that came up. So there's a lot of confusion because the target is always moving. So, um, a few questions regards to this, so what do schools do when you can't distance six feet? Should masks be wear'd, worn, excuse me, when, um, you're able to distance six feet? And let us know your thoughts on how schools should proceed with their distancing parameters and what teachers and families should know about the risk and mitigation strategies.
Sure, I think it's important, you know, that, that, just to, just to clarify this, you know, once and for all, you know, the guidelines that are put out by CDC, the State Department of Health. Talk about six feet, you know, when possible, when feasible, and those are very important qualifiers, and the guidance that Bucks County put out said the same thing. Uh, we always say you aim for six feet, um, and that, but, but of course, we know in, uh, this is why those qualifiers are there, that there's many school districts throughout the United States and in Pennsylvania. That cannot do a full six feet between, um, between students and actually reopen in person. So that's why those qualifiers, qualifiers, qualifiers are there. Uh, and the three feet distance, uh, was put as a floor minimum. I clearly, you know, put, I, I put that in our guidance, and there's not a whole lot of other guidance in the state of Pennsylvania that has that three-foot floor, Massachusetts and Virginia both do. Uh, mention that in their guidance for their states, but they're not saying aim for three, they're saying aim for six, uh, with a minimum of three, and the three-foot. And the three-foot, um, and I'm happy to get into it if you want a little bit more. But, you know, that, that is a, that, that goes back, there's a lot of research on droplets, right? This, as I said earlier, this is spread by droplets. When you cough, sneeze, talk, there's large respiratory droplets that come out of your mouth, and, and they, they come down. And about three feet, a vast, a vast majority of them do drop out. Now, of course, are there some that could go a little further? Absolutely. Uh, and is six feet a little bit better than three? Um, most likely. Is 12 feet better? Is 15 feet better? And, uh, you know, if me, me and Kalen probably can't get each other sick right now because we're pretty far from each other. Um, and, and I think that's important to know. So obviously, a little bit better, it's always better to be a little bit further. Um, and, and we push that. But there are situations where six feet can't be met. And there's, and, and there's, there's literally countries around the world that are going back to school, you know, now and in a month, uh, where they will be using three foot as the distance in their schools. Uh, I know there's all kinds of discussions about, well, Europe has it under control, we don't. Um, but I would say that overall, you know, Pennsylvania is doing really well. Uh, and, and I think that the masking order is really important here. Um, the governor's universal masking order allows you to go within that six-foot, um, amount and still be safe, okay? Um, you know, the whole idea behind masks, we've been talking about this for months, right? If you can't get within, before the masking order, they said, if you, if you can't stay six feet away from someone, make sure you're wearing a mask. Well, in this situation, we're gonna be having kids who may or may not be six feet apart in certain situations. They may, they may not be, they will all be wearing masks. And I think that's really important, um, to, to get out there, that we're not, we're not putting kids in a situation where they'd be sitting four feet from someone without a mask. Um, and then another really important point is here, and I know some people, uh, it's not only, it's not the only thing. We're also looking at not bringing kids in that are sick. And I know that there's some parents that, that may try to send their kids in, and we, we can't stop it. But if, I, I say this, and I think this is really important. If most people do the right thing, most of the time, we'll be in pretty good shape. And so bringing kids in that aren't sick to school, they're wearing masks, and they're as far apart as possible, whether it's four and a half feet, five feet, whatever it may be, that's gonna keep our kids from spreading it in schools. And that's what we're trying to do.
Great. Thank you. So along those lines, your guidance, um, I'm glad that you were able to clarify some of that. Some people feel like your guidance conflicts with the CDC and the Department of Education. And I know that you just touched on that a little bit. If six feet is the goal for social distancing, why was three foot recommended in your guidelines? And so do, do your guidelines conflict with the CDC and the Department of Education?
Uh, they, they don't. Um, and there was actually an article in the newspaper this week, uh, where they actually interviewed the State Health Department, and they, they looked at our plan, and they said that they're, they're in agreement. Uh, the reason why I got a little bit of flack for this is because I put that three-foot floor. Um, everyone else is saying six feet when feasible. The CDC says that, the Department of Education says that, the Department of Health says that. Um, I was trying to put that in there. So a science-based floor, you can call that. So that's the bare minimum. Because again, that's being used around the world. There's a lot of data that shows, it was a great study in the Lancet that came out in early June, uh, that shows that the, the risk of infection is clearly, uh, less when you move one foot or more away from, from others. So, um, that was put out there as, as a bare floor. You gotta stay three feet away from others in the school district and, uh, in the, in the classroom. And, and, and I've been getting, obviously, some, some criticism from certain, um, groups because I put that floor in there. But if you look at, you know, the state even just came out and said the other day that our guidance is not pushing three feet, never has been. Our guidance has been saying, get to six if you can, but no less than, than three. So we are not in discordance with the CDC or the State Department of Health guidelines.
Thank you. All right, so let's talk, um, community spread. How does community spread play a factor? You just mentioned our cases are really low now. But what if that changes? So what is the number, and you may not know this or have that, this in mind, but what is the number of positive COVID cases in our community as far as a percentage that a community might, uh, think about, we need to kind of pull back here and reevaluate having kids in school in person?
I, I wouldn't put a percentage on there. Like, you know, tomorrow, we might have two people in Bucks County get tested. And if one of them tests positive, that's a 50% positivity rate. So it all depends on how many tests you're running, who's getting tested, you know, what the situation is that week. You know, we focus on, as I said earlier, I look very carefully. And twice a day, I look at the hospitalized patients in Bucks County. We got a really good report. Um, twice a day, I get that report, and I look at that very carefully. That, to me, is in some ways the most important, uh, aspect. Because we're doing all this work to keep people out of hospitals and from getting very sick. And of course, some people will. There's no question about it. You know, you can't guarantee that somebody won't get sick and somebody won't die from coronavirus in any, you know, county in the United States. You, you can never guarantee that. Um, but what we look at is, as I said earlier, when I, when I define pure community spread, we look at when we start seeing people that don't know where they got it. Uh, you know, right, you know, today, we had someone say, well, I went to this party, went to that party, and someone called me and said that they had a bad coronavirus, and I was sharing drinks or whatever. You know, that, those kinds of cases are real cases, don't get me wrong. But those are not, um, pure community spread. But we start seeing an upsurge of cases where people are just doing their normal thing, and they have no idea how they got it. So we start to look at that. When we see the community spread, pure community spread numbers go up, we look at that, we look at hospitalizations, obviously. Um, and then once school reopens, and we can get into this, you know, as we go forward, uh, we would start to look at, you know, um, the cases in schools. And I want people to be very clear. There's a big difference between a case in a school versus a case gotten in school. So, you know, we look at how every case is, is actually infected. And, and, and I said this in a different town hall, and I got a little bit of grief on it when I said, you know, I guarantee that we will have cases in every school district in Bucks County. And when I said, when I mean that, what I mean exactly what I say is that we have cases now in all of our school district, right? We may not have a lot, but we have, you know, we have a 16-year-old, a 17-year-old, 19-year-old, you know, a couple of smaller children throughout the county right now. We have an open school. So we know that kids are going to get sick at some point from COVID, regardless of whether schools are open or not. But what we're trying to put into place are procedures so that if the kid does come to school, they won't spread it to each other, right? If they're wearing a mask and social distancing, and we're cleaning the classrooms, that's the whole point, is we're not saying there won't be ever a case in the school. We're trying to prevent the spread of those cases once school opens.
Makes sense. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this question, and I just want you to know, it wasn't the way I worded it. Um, but it has, it was definitely a common question. So people want to know, why is it okay for school districts to not have to follow? So, and, and the governor's orders basically for things like restaurants, where they can only have 25% capacity, and, and you're not allowed to meet in large groups, um, bars, stores have limitations. So people want to know, why not schools?
Well, number one, the governor writes those orders, and the governor has carved schools out as exceptions for a lot of this. So I can tell you that, that, you know, you know, the governor has made certain decisions. And I believe a lot of those decisions are being based on the fact that school is, is essential. Uh, and we can get into this later too, but school is an essential service. Um, you know, the, the, it's, he's basically putting them into the same category as grocery stores. And, you know, kids need to go back to school, he said it recently. Obviously, want to do it safely. But I believe that's why schools are not being, you know, held to the same as a restaurant. A restaurant is not essential technically. You know, you don't have to go out to eat. Uh, you take your masks off when you're eating in a restaurant. So, you know, there's, there's a lot, there, there are some differences, obviously, between a bar and a restaurant and, and a school. Hopefully, kids are not, you know, you know, drinking alcohol in, in school. But, uh, you know, there, there are differences. And, and the governor has very specifically carved out exceptions for school and other, and there's exceptions for various things throughout his orders, um, based on how important that particular activity or event is to actually happen in our society.
Another question that we had from the community, or a board member, I cannot recall. So you stated in the Bucks County Courier-Times, "While health and safety considerations for paramount guidance is also rooted in our understanding and the belief that social interaction and personal instruction is essential to our children's emotional well-being, as well as their educational growth and advancement, is that comment based on returning to a normal face-to-face school environment where kids are maskless, can socialize with their friends, can play normally and collaborate in small group interactive sessions? Please explain how the same benefits can be found when returning to such an extreme difference in the settings."
Sure. I, I think everybody on this, everybody on this Zoom call, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a staff person, whether you're a parent, whether you're a school member, we all want to get the kids back to school with no restrictions, right? I think that's what it, we all want to go back to what we did a year ago. Or maybe we don't, maybe we don't want the flu to spread in our schools, maybe we want to keep this stuff forever. But, but the idea is that, that's the goal.
Your sound is a little bit muddled.
Can you hear me?
It's, it's a little bit muddled, I don't know how to.
It's like something, something clicked and it changed almost. Maybe turn it off, turn it back on, the sound.
Is that better?
Same.
It's the same. We can still hear it, we should keep going.
Okay, we can just keep going then.
All right, um, so, I guess, so, you know, as I said, I'll just repeat the one sentence, uh, version of that, is that we all want to get the kids back, you know, regularly. I think that's what everyone's goal is, when it's all said and done. But we do know that what's happened to these children, you know, over that long, you know, it's still going on. You know, people have been six March, uh, whatever that was, mid-March, the day that they closed all the schools, and the students and our children have been home. Um, you know, that, that's clearly not, you know, children, when they grow up, when they're with their friends, it, it's important for them, they're social animals. Children want to be out with their friends, they want to be doing things, they want to be involved. You know, I think being at school with a teacher, the teacher, but all great, I think that they, in a perfect world, you know, assuming they can feel safe, they all want to get the kids back, they know that's the best way to teach. Um, and I think that everyone agrees with that. Um, the question is about, there's other, there's other, you know, arguments people can have, but I think everyone wants the kids back because that's what's best for them. And I think pretty much every major organization across the country has agreed with that statement, saying that we want to get the kids back if possible, uh, if safely. But that's the best thing for kids. We know, uh, you know, I spoke with our Children and Youth Agency. There's, there's obviously increased reports of mental health conditions in children. Uh, there's domestic abuse, uh, there's drugs. And there, there's things that we've seen increased, uh, you know, levels of, uh, when children are not able to, to maintain the normal social, uh, 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 levels that they have. And I think that putting kids in a school, even if they're masked, I think our kids are very adaptable. I think the kids will get used to it quickly. I know that they will be able to be hugging each other and doing some of the things when they see them every day. But I do believe that, um, uh, after a couple of weeks of getting used to sort of what's going on, they'll still be with their friends, they'll still be able to socialize, uh, have conversations, be with their teachers, uh, in, in an in-person environment, you know. I'm not sure how it's gonna work with the virtual choice, you know. I know that everyone's making this choice, it was best for the family. Um, but even in that environment, they'll still be able to hopefully, you know, see what's going on in the classroom, feel, and, and, I don't know how it's gonna work for these school districts, it's different. Um, but I do believe that, um, the children that aren't going back in person will still feel that camaraderie that they have with their friends, uh, even if they're wearing masks, even if they're not able to give them the hug, the normal hugs that they do. Being with their friends, I believe, has a, has a real, uh, social and emotional value, uh, that, that I think's important. And, and I'm not just saying that myself, there's a lot, again, there's a lot of organizations nationally that, that agree with that statement.
All right, I hate to do this, Dr. Damsker, but you're starting to sound like Darth Vader now. So maybe it's like echoing. Could you try to maybe exit the call and rejoin us to see if that helps? And I'm so sorry for those in the public.
It's okay.
Anybody else think he sounded like Darth Vader?
No.
He said.
But hard to hear, hard to hear.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely a little painful, so let's hope that.
Kalen, you did get a couple more questions on the Q and A, if, if you want.
So I, yeah, let me address that, guys. I am trying to, I'm gonna try to get through as many of the questions we have already pre-populated. If we have time, we'll get, definitely attempt to get through the others.
Is that any better or the same?
Woo!
Okay.
It was worth it. Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
All right. Be with me, I'm just gonna scroll back up here. Okay, um, have any of the cases of COVID been reported, that is, that have been reported to have spread among the children and teachers and daycares? Because we know, and we'll talk about this after, um, our conversation with you. But there's, and I want people in the public to recognize this as well. Because the kids who are not in our schools, who have families that, um, are working full-time, if they, they can afford it, those kids are going to be in other places with other kids in, in facilities. So have you seen any, uh, spread amongst any of the summer camps that have been open the last, the last, you know, several weeks?
Yeah, we've, we've, we haven't seen spread. We, we've seen a couple of cases in the summer camps, but they weren't from the summer camps. Um, you know, we had cases of where the siblings or the parents were sick first, gave the kid the disease. The kid went to, you know, went to camp or wasn't able to go to camp. Um, so we felt pretty good about that. And the camps are doing a terrific job, uh, in the heat. Uh, we worked with a lot of camps on their safety protocols. It's not easy to be outside 95 degrees with a mask on.
Right.
Um, you know, just the other day, walking from Greckertown High School to Greckertown Elementary School, you know, I tried to keep my mask on, and that was, that was a hot walk, right?
It was, it was.
It, it's, it's clear though, but we, we, we have had a couple of cases, but they weren't from, you know, camp spread. They were just people who happened to come to camp sick already from their homes. But don't get me wrong, it's not impossible, you know, no one is, uh, we're, you ever get on this call saying it's impossible for it to be spread at, at a summer camp or from small children? Uh, the idea though, is that our smaller children do seem to have less, they clearly have less symptoms, and they clearly have less propensity to spread it. But it's not impossible, right? I mean, it, it's, nothing's impossible in medicine, and we never want to say that. Um, but we do, we do know that kids are less likely to be sick, and they, at least, at least the smaller kids are less likely to spread the disease. And we hope that that trend continues.
That actually, uh, that helps us with the transition to the next question, which is contact tracing and transmitting the virus to adults. I think a lot of people are worried about that. And, and I know that there's some data out there that supports that, that the kids are not as likely to transmit the virus. But out of your contact tracing that you've done, how many children are suspected of transmitting the virus to adults?
We, we haven't really had any young kids at all, but we have a handful of older teenagers, uh, in, in a couple. I would say, I think it was, uh, probably six or seven cases where we know documented. And that may have happened more. Um, but we know that if, if it's a 16-year-old, and, and these are household contacts. And, and we do know that if you have, you look, if you have a 16, 17, 18-year-old kid, uh, in someone's home, no one's wearing masks, no one's cleaning up after, you know, people are all using the same sinks in refrigerators and bathrooms, and people are, are doing the hygiene, you know, it makes sense that that could be spread. Um, and is it possible if people go to a party and they share a vape pen, they share a beer, they share whatever? Of course, you know, things can, things can spread. Um, so, but we haven't seen a lot of that, you know, certainly outside of teenagers. Which, once you're 18 years old, you know, you're basically an adult. And 16, 17, 18-year-olds, um, i- i- in those situations could spread it. The most important to remember though, as I said, I can say this in the beginning, is we're not talking about people at parties drinking and vaping. We're talking about kids being socially distanced at school, wearing masks in a very structured environment. Um, and because whether, no matter what we do in school, it's really important that our, that our, especially our, you know, the older kids, the seniors, the teenagers, don't go to your kid's house, you know, your friend's house, and do, and do stupid things and, and not, and pretend that COVID doesn't exist. And I think that's really even more, that's just as an important point as what we're doing in schools right now, is making sure that overall, that people keep making good decisions. Whether it's, you know, whether it's an 18-year-old, whether it's a 48-year-old, make good decisions when you're out and about. Because you can make everybody wear a mask in Target and Giant, but as soon as you get home, you have 20 people in your house and play beer pong, then, you know, we, we can have problems. So I think it's, it's, it's in everyone's best interest to keep doing those things, even when they're not in school. And that will help prevent bringing any cases in the first place.
Is this part of being from New Orleans?
What?
So, so, Kalen, this is Keith, can you hear me?
I can. I can.
Can I ask a quick question to sort of follow up on that? Um, and, and maybe you could touch on it a little bit, is really, i- i- is that, is that spread less because of, you know, sort of the, the viral load that you would suspect, uh, in, in patients that are, are less ill? Uh, as opposed to patients that are severely ill?
Talking about kids, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, is that, we, we, you know, we, we talk a lot about viral load, and you hear it once in a while mentioned. Um, but, but, you know, a couple of questions around the data, um, and, and sort of this low level of hi, i- i- if any hospitalizations, um, speaks to, you know, what one's got to ask is, is why, right? So either the population of people that are getting it are healthier and therefore able to fend it off, like, as opposed to the beginning of the epidemic. Um, or, you know, are we seeing, you know, sort of it just muddle around and people aren't as sick, but they are just sort of passing it along in, in a lesser amount? Is there any?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what their viral load has anything to do with it, but I can tell you, especially like in small children, if you're a three-year-old with COVID, and, you know, you're, you're, you're talking, you're, you're very, you're very low to the ground. So, and this is sort of a physics thing, right? I mean, I'm not a physics teacher by any stretch, um, but I did say at Holiday Express last night, the, the, the droplets do go down, uh, you know, by gravity. So spreading to adults would make, would make actually sense. For three-year-olds, you know, with a parent, you know, they're not going to be, uh, the droplet's going to go down. Whether it's three feet or six feet, they're still going to drop to the ground. Uh, and like you said earlier, when you're not, when you're asymptomatic, when you're very mildly symptomatic, they, there is, there is some theories out there that those people are not shedding as much, uh, as someone who's very sick, but I don't think there's been, I don't think you can, we can prove that scientifically where measured, you know, viral loads. There is, there are some studies showing that, that less, uh, the people that are symptomatic do clear the disease faster. So we know that people that are asymptomatic, uh, and China did a nice study on that showing that, you know, that the, the, there are fewer days, the naso, the swab is negative in fewer days of those that were mildly symptomatic versus those that were more symptomatic. They, they kind of recover quicker. It's hard to know whether they're shedding it as much or not, but they do recover quicker, and I think that's important, that they're not out infectious as long a period as someone who's more symptomatic.
Thank you.
Hope that helps a little bit, but, um.
So we know masks are important. We also know that this, the Pennsylvania Department of Education recently said that, that face shields could be used in place of masks. And I know there's a lot of concern about that from especially our teachers. They're concerned that it doesn't offer enough protection. So I wanted to know what your recommendations were in regards to mask versus face shields?
Yeah, and, and I think that the most important thing is we want parents to feel comfortable, just like their choice between in-person and virtual. We want the parents to feel comfortable. Uh, the, the face shields are, the, the, the good study that was done, the major, the study that was done, you know, several years ago, shows that, you know, if I were to cough in your face, and you're wearing a face shield, it provides really good protection, you know? It gives you eye protection that masks don't do. And we know that if you get coronavirus or other viruses on your hand and rub your eye, you can certainly inoculate yourself and, and get sick from that, and, and that's how, one of the reasons people get sick. So we know that masks are good for protection purposes, and this is assuming they're worn properly. Uh, you know, if you, if you flip your face shield up, just like you were, if you pull your mask down, right? And I said this in, in the newspaper the other day, you know, any mask, that if you're not wearing a mask correctly, you know, might, might as well not be wearing one, right? So face shields, I believe, are a little more comfortable to wear for kids, uh, it gives eye protection, and if you wear it properly, uh, you know, people are saying, the, the reason why the CDC isn't sure whether they should recommend it or not, it talks about source control. And so that source control means if I'm, if I have coronavirus and I'm wearing a, a face mask, and I cough or sneeze into that mask, it's stopping particles from going places, and that helps prevent the whole room from, from getting sick. However, if you're wearing a properly fitted face shield that goes below your chin, wraps around, if I, you know, cough or sneeze into a face shield, that's a solid plastic, impermeable surface. That's going to stop droplets too. And, and the reason why there's not big studies on face shields, because up until a few months ago, nobody was wearing masks and face shields anywhere except for hospitals, right? And so in hospitals, there's a difference, you know? You, you might hear from a nurse saying, well, when I'm in the hospital, I was wearing a mask and a face shield, because they're, they're dealing with COVID patients, they're doing, you know, things that aerosolize, um, and, and those need N95s. Um, and, and those face shields in a hospital setting is different than being in a community setting. Um, and again, the governor's order obviously allows it. So right there, that's the answer that, you know, that's the real answer, is the governor's order allows it. But there's also clearly, there's, there's some protective value, uh, you know, for your eyes, uh, and if you do cough, talk, or sneeze, you're, you're going right, if you're wearing it correctly, it's going right into a solid surface. And those droplets hit the solid surface and they go down, and they go down by gravity too. So there, there's definitely, um, you know, logic will tell you that they do things, that they, they do help, they do help. And what we also discussed, you know, in classroom settings, if you have a, a young child who doesn't want to wear the mask, and every time that the teacher's talking, they keep pulling it down, you know, they're, they're potentially, depending what's in their hands, they're contaminating the mask, they're not easy to clean. A face shield, you can wipe it down with soap and water, you can wipe it down with an alcohol wipe and actually sanitize it. So they're reusable, uh, they're easy to sanitize, and you can actually have a conversation with someone without pulling masks down. I mean, every day I see it all over the place. Every time someone wants to have a discussion with someone, they pull their mask down, and you don't have to do that with a face shield. Uh, if a teacher wants to see the facial expression on a child, you know, they're, they're doing a math problem on the board, and little Johnny not getting it, he's like, has a puzzled look. If all you can see is their eyes, it's very difficult to pick that out. And look, I'm not an educator, there's people on this call that have a lot more knowledge and that I, that I, that I've forgotten more than I'll know about education. But I'm pretty sure that looking at kids' faces has an impact on the teaching that they're doing. Uh, I, so I've been in meetings where I'm looking at people's faces when I'm talking to them, and I can see their expressions, and it helps guide what you're doing as the next step in, when you're teaching. So, um, I think face shields provide a lot of, a lot of benefits, and the county's going to be providing face shields for anyone who decides that's what they want to wear, but they're absolutely not mandatory. Uh, if a parent wants their child to wear a face mask, they can wear a face mask and a face shield if they want to. Um, there's, there's, there, this is not something we're, we're recommending or requiring, we're providing them because we feel, we know that it's an acceptable alternative, and there's definitely some benefits to wearing them. Uh, and, and anyone who wants to see a study comparing face shields and face, and cloth masks isn't going to see it, because this entire situation just started a couple of months ago. Uh, and, and it's not going to happen anytime soon, but we, we do believe there's a lot of benefits to wearing a face shield if that's what a parent chooses to do.
Sure. A lot of parents are also concerned about the amount of time that kids have to wear a mask, and, you know, I think most adults struggle with wearing a mask for long periods of time. So there's some guidance around mask breaks, and tell us your thoughts on that.
Sure. I, I have five different things that I wear. I have a neck gaiter, I have a face shield, I have a surgical mask, I have an Eagles mask. Uh, I don't like to wear masks for eight hours straight myself, I find them, I find it difficult, so I, I switch it up. And I advise anyone to have multiple things available. So maybe some of the children can wear their face shield part of the day, their mask part of the day, kind of varied up. Um, but the mask breaks are important. So in, in, in our schools, at any point, the kids are six feet apart or further, they can take off their masks for a mask break. Now, the, the length of the mask break hasn't been defined yet, it's sort of up to each individual school district. Uh, if they're eating lunch, then they can, if they're six feet away, they can take their masks off to eat lunch or the mask, those are the two situations where they can remove them. Or if they're outside and they're six feet or more, they can also remove their masks. And I, and I, and I think that's going to be really important, especially, you know, over the next month or two while it's still hot outside. Um, but I think they're important, you know? I, I, I think it's difficult, and, and I know people that work with masks on all day long in the healthcare field, I know many people, and, um, it, it, it is, they all want, they do want to take a break, whether it's at lunchtime, whether it's break time. Uh, I don't think anyone loves wearing masks all day long. Um, I, I, there could be someone out there, but I don't know anyone who actually prefers to wear one. So I think it's important for anyone in any situation to be able to take a mask break, uh, and especially our younger children. I think if you give them the ability to say, hey, look, we're going to be taking breaks on a regular basis, um, depending on what school you're in, you may be able to move the chairs. And we did this when we, um, you know, the other day, uh, with, when we visited the schools. Uh, if you're able to be four or five feet apart, you may be able to move the desks, just, you know, each kid can move the desk back, you know, a few inches and separate out, possibly in the room, depending on how it's set up. And maybe they can put tape in the floor to show where you can move for your mask break position. Uh, there's all kinds of things I think teachers can do, uh, because even if you're not at six feet the entire day, you can, you can maybe come up with a way in your room to be six feet apart. Uh, or you can have the children, some of the children can stand up and go to different parts of the room, uh, separate out for the mask break and make sure we're all six feet apart. But I think that's up to each individual teacher and principal and school district to figure out ways to make that happen. But I'm a firm believer that, you know, children should be practicing wearing their masks when they're not in school, and they kind of get used to wearing them. Um, you don't want to put a kid in school for the first time having never worn a mask. Uh, that, you're, you're sort of setting them up, you know, to have difficulty with that. So I would recommend to all parents out there, make sure, make sure your kids are practicing even at home, you know, have them, have them wear, wear it for a couple hours at a time, and get used to wearing it. Because I, I'm pretty confident the governor's order is not going to go away anytime soon. I think kids will, and while all of us will be wearing masks into the foreseeable future, uh, you know, it's true until the end of the year, possibly longer, uh, depending on what happens. Um, so, uh, again, it's, give the kids options, figure out what's best for them. A kid who's wearing a mask that they feel comfortable wearing is one that they're going to wear.
Okay, recess. A lot of teachers are thinking, oh my gosh, if my kids don't have recess, that's going to be, that's going to be a nightmare, because kids need to get that energy out. They're asking all sorts of questions. What are we going to do at recess? Do we need to wear a mask? Do, you know, what are your recommendations? Do you think kids should have, still have their recess, and what guidance can you give us on that?
Yeah, recess is extremely important. Uh, you know, being in school all day, uh, you know, kids are kids, they need a little bit of time. Even the older kids need some kind of, you know, break time to, to divorce themselves from the math and the science and everything else. Uh, and I think that recess is extremely important. I think what we need to start looking at are some activities that don't require the kids to be as close as they normally are. Uh, but I can tell you right now, being outside, just in general, is, is extremely, is way less risky. It's, we're, we're seeing, you know, the, the, the cases that we get, you know, I can't say for sure if we've ever had an outside exposure, but we haven't really been able to pinpoint too many pure outside exposures. You know, we had, we had the protests that occurred, um, you know, and we, we, in Bucks County anyway, now, we can't say for sure, because somebody may have not told us the truth about where they were, where they weren't. But we really didn't see any cases, um, from those protests, and a lot of people wearing masks, a lot of people were socially distancing, not everybody was, clearly. Um, but being outside, there's no doubt about it, that that's a safer place to be. So anytime you can get the kids outside, whether it's teaching the class probably outside, whether it's having the kids out for recess, um, i- is a good thing. And I think the kids should do their best to play games that don't require them to be, you know, right in each other's faces, you know, even something like basketball. You know, you can have kids shoot around, they can share the same basketball as long as they're washing their hands before and after, and there's games that you can play that don't require you to be face-to-face. But look, smaller kids are smaller kids, uh, and, and, and on a really hot day, if you have a bunch of five, six, seven-year-olds, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie, I think it's going to be difficult for the, for the recess monitors, the teachers to keep an eye on every second. But remember, an exposure for, for coronavirus is being within six feet of somebody for 15 minutes or more.
That was going to be a question, I had, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that's the definition of, of an exposure. Now, that's not to say if I cough right in your face, or, you know, share a cigarette with you or something, God forbid, um, you know, that there are things that could be considered exposure that are inside of that time. But overall, if kids are running around outside, and they run past each other, they play a quick game with each other outside, that's not really going to be considered a close exposure. So I think there's a little bit more flexibility, uh, when the kids are outside, obviously have to be monitored and carefully watched, but, um, I, I, I think that we absolutely have to give it, give the kids a chance to, um, to be with each other and, and have the social aspects.
Great. So, um, what's your recommendation if a teacher or student tests positive? Who makes that decision when, if the rest of the cla, you know, class would be, need to be quarantined, or if a, if a teacher, um, any, if a teacher or a student gets infected? What process should we consider to make that determination?
Yeah, and our guidance, we feel very strongly that we're trying not to interrupt the classroom teaching as much as possible. So if, if we end up having, uh, a child, especially, especially one that's getting sick, we'll start with talking about people that get sick from outside of school, which is what most of, which I believe is what will end up sick for the most part. So a child, you know, ends up, um, getting it from their parents who, you know, went to Florida or whatever, they get it from, the child comes into school, uh, does their normal day, goes home, gets sick that night, gets tested, and ends up having COVID. Uh, our, our, our role is, obviously we find out who in that classroom was at higher risk, who was exposed to that child. But what we're trying to do is something called modified quarantine. And this is something that is, it was difficult for us to do this months ago, because not everyone's wearing a mask. But we've been doing this with first responders, hospital staff, essential workers for months, and it's worked out really, really well. And what that means is, you, you, you go to school, uh, the kids will still go back to class, but they have to wear the masks at all times, uh, except when they are, in very rare times, if they have to eat, they try to separate the kids out in that, in that classroom where it was, just be really careful. It's basically similar to what they're doing already, but just a little bit more careful, that the kids, when they take their masks off, you know, you may have to, at recess, you have to be a little bit more specific about what they're doing. And these are just kids that were exposed potentially, uh, but remember, when we're being exposed to these kids in the classroom with a teacher, everyone's wearing a mask already. So none of these exposures should be high risk, and that's important when we get this across. We, we're not talking about someone who coughed in someone's face without a mask. We're talking about a group of kids that all is masked during the school day, including the teacher. So if some, one of those children ends up becoming positive, you know, from an exposure they had at their house or whatever, that child, if everyone's masked, it's a very low-risk exposure. And we don't want, we don't want to shut down schools, we don't want to shut down classrooms every single time there's a case. Uh, a- and I know the CDC is, is giving guidance recently, and they're, they're, they're also sort of saying the same thing. It's important, it, it's, it's extremely destructive and detrimental to kids to have them go back at home for 14 days and come back, and then you sit out for 14 days, and on day 15, another kid in a different classroom gets sick, and then you, you, it becomes extremely disruptive. And as some of the parents are choosing virtual, because they think that's what's going to happen. And, and I'm, and, and our guidance is not to do that. The only time we would consider closing a classroom or a school or anything is if we start to see intra, inter-school cases, where we see five cases in a classroom or something, where those kids aren't hanging out outside of school. And, and this is why we do contact tracing. You know, you may have three 18-year-old seniors at Quaker Town High School, and they all get sick, and we think, oh my God, it must be from school. Well, it turns out that all three of them went to the party at, at Bobby's house over the weekend, got sick there, and came to school. So a lot of what we're doing is, that's part of why contact tracing is so important, is we're looking to see where they got infected. So having a case in your school doesn't mean that it's spread in your school, and that's really, really important. And if we're all wearing masks and social distancing, we don't anticipate to see having higher numbers of spread in school. That's why we're trying to keep things as they are, put the kids into a something called, again, a modified quarantine, and, and not shut everything down. Uh, and again, that's when we'll start to worry. You said earlier, what, what are, what are some of the things we look for? Hospitalizations and community spread. Well, in a school situation, we start to look for a spread within a school. And if we start to see that while we're masked and while we're socially distancing, then we have to, we look, we may have to start saying, step back and say, okay, why is this happening? Are, are they not following the rules? Is something going on? And that's when we take a more serious look. But just having a case here and there, you know, we feel strongly that, that we don't want to disrupt the entire situation from, now, again, if a teacher's sick, um, you know, and that's up to each individual school district. They may be able to teach a Zoom class from home, I, I'm not sure. I, I don't want to get into that, because that's not, that's not what we do. Uh, but we believe that that, you know, that, that classroom can continue, uh, in, 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 in a, uh, those kids can still be in classroom, depending on how each school district does it. I can't speak to how Quaker Town would do it, or how, you know, any other school district can do it, but that there's, there's possibilities without having to say, you guys are going home for 14 days. Uh, and, 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 you know, take away from that experience of, you know, ping-ponging back and forth.
So what if a kid doesn't have COVID? Maybe they have a cold?
Sure. And it's interesting that the state guidelines that just came out the other day, uh, addressed this exact thing. They said that if a child has symptoms, whether it's a fever, whether it's, or, or anything else, like a runny nose, if there's no known exposure to COVID, whether it's from another student, whether it's from a family member, or, you know, anything, they're saying 24 hours of having no fever or symptoms, that child can come back to school, and testing is not required. And, and, and I think it's put in there specifically for that kind of thing, where we know kids are going to have, you know, a headache sometimes, or tummy ache, or they may, you know, have a stuffy nose for a day. Um, and the state, the state guidance put that out just last week in, in that full P E guidance, which is, um, I believe that's what they're trying to do. They're trying not to keep a kid out every time they have a headache, because we know that, and the school nurses are a huge part of this. I, 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 I think the teachers, again, I have respect for every person coming, having to come back to work. I know some people are scared, but our school nurses are the, the ones that have been working with a lot of these kids, uh, and I want them to feel protected, I want them to have good guidance. I'm trying to meet with all the school nurse, um, directors, uh, several times we've already done that, uh, via conference call. But I, I do believe that, you know, things like allergies, right? You know, there's kids that they have an, they have a runny nose every spring and every fall, and things like letting your school nurse know ahead of time that little Johnny has allergies. You'll give him a Claritin, um, you know, when he gets home from school. If, if, if the symptoms improve, then you know, okay, it's most likely allergies. If you have a kid who's a little bit short of breath because they have asthma, use their inhaler. If their symptoms improve, great. Um, but what we've seen is, some of the kids in our cases here in Buck County is, people say, you know, I have allergies, but this doesn't feel like my allergies, you know? Or I've taken my Claritin or my Zyrtec, and it didn't really get me better. Or my, my asthma, normally it gets better when I use my inhaler, and it didn't get any better. And those are the people that end up having coronavirus a lot of times. And it's not just the kids, it's in adults, because this is why, because we talked to all of our cases, we've seen how this goes. So it, it's important that we don't, you know, every kid has got a headache, doesn't mean they have coronavirus, and, and, and the school nurses are, the teachers are really important in all this. Uh, and that rule that the state put out allows us, again, this is not someone whose family member is positive with COVID, this is someone who has no known exposure to COVID. Um, it allows those kids to come back 24 hours after resolving their fever or symptom that they had.
You mentioned that during lunch, that our kids would need to, um, that they would be able to take off their mask as long as they're socially distant, and, and obviously we're going to be doing that in the classroom. Uh, there's some concerns around that. Uh, someone mentioned, they said, I know that kids need help with certain things at lunchtime, messes that are made naturally while eating, no one will have a mask on, and we won't be spread out as we would be in a cafeteria. What do you suggest to teachers and staff helping in monitoring lunch in a classroom that would keep everyone safe and healthy?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, I wish I had the exact answer for you on that. Um, obviously, you know, whatever teacher is going to be within six feet of this killed children, they have to put their P P E back on, they put their mask on. Uh, you know, and I, I agree, in, in the first, second, third grade, there's maybe some issues, people spill things, they do things, because we've never really ate much in our classroom, so it'll be new for everybody. Um, and, and hopefully, once the kids get used to being hopefully as independent as possible, you know, opening their own lunchbox, doing the things they normally do, over time, the teachers won't have to approach them as much during those breaks. But I understand, it's a good question. As most important thing is when the teacher goes to help a child out, and they have to be wearing their mask. And we can actually ask the child briefly, hey, put your face shield back on, put your mask back on while the teacher comes to help, so they're both are masked during that interaction, uh, whether helping clean up the mask or whatever situation happens. But we do want, you know, whenever the students are coming close together face-to-face with the teacher or others, they should both put their mask back on, even if it's just for, you know, just for 20 seconds to, to fix whatever the problem is, and then take it off. Uh, and that's one advantage to a face shield I think of, you, you can actually sift through a straw wearing your face shield, but, um, in my class. But I agree, I mean, it's, it's a good question, and I appreciate the teachers being concerned, but I believe that the most important thing is when they do help, that puts masks back on the child, and the teachers keep their mask on while, you know, helping whatever they're doing.
That's a good idea, shields during lunch, hmm, maybe. Um, that might be a little difficult, but maybe, it's a good idea. So, uh, so some teachers, especially elementary school teachers that I'm talking to that have younger ones, they're constantly, you know, when, when kids get back to school, they're sad. They miss their mom and dad, they're crying, teachers are so used to hugging and comforting kids, they're used to bending over and helping them learn how to use a pencil for the first They're used to bending over and helping them learn how to use a pencil for the first time. So that's gonna change, obviously, to some extent with the new model. But do you think that if a teacher were to briefly interact with a child and both people are wearing a mask, what level of risk do you think would be involved in that interaction?
Remember, as I said earlier, when both people are wearing masks, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be, it's, it's the extended period of time. It's that fifteen minutes, close face-to-face contact for fifteen minutes. That's when the CDC calls a close exposure. Now, again, if, if, if a child is sobbing, crying, and they end up, you know, hugging the child, you know, that's a, that's a high-risk exposure. But if, if everyone's wearing a mask, obviously you're, you're reducing the risk. Um, you know, I can't say that every, that nothing, nothing I can say will reduce all risk in a classroom. Uh, and I know our teachers want to help, I mean, this is why they're teachers, because they care about the kids. Uh, and I know they feel strongly that sometimes you're gonna have a young child crying in the classroom, and I think you do your best. Uh, it, it feels cold almost to say, I'm gonna comfort you, but I'm wearing my mask and my face shield while I'm comforting you, right? It feels a little cold, but um, I think that for right now, uh, you know, it's, 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 it probably has to happen. The teachers have to feel comfortable, you know, helping kids out. The, the kids may be crying wearing a mask or a face shield. Um, and that's, and that's one advantage. If you get tears inside of a face shield, you can, we can take it off, we can wash it off, right? That's one advantage. But I, I agree, it, it, these are, these are really good questions. These are not questions that I have answers to from a public health perspective. But I can tell you though, that they have to just focus on keeping themselves safe. Keeping their P P E on as much as they want to take it off, as much as they want to give the kids a hug. Um, focus on, you know, what can I do to reduce the, the risk of, of transmission? And, um, you know, putting a hand on a child's shoulder, maybe there's things that they can do. Uh, but again, it's, I, I don't have all the answers, and it's not gonna be easy, no question about it.
Sure, sure. Busing. Someone did ask this, but I don't know that this is what we're recommending, that students sit directly next to each other on a school bus, unless they're in the same household, right?
Two per seat is what we're, is what we said we would accept.
What is your recommendation on that, Dr. Dancer?
Yeah, it, the most important thing, you know, is you keep, you give two people on a seat, and it doesn't quite give you the three feet. You are within, most likely they'll be a little bit closer than three feet. I haven't measured, um, you know, it depends on the size of the kids. If you have two high school kids, they can't be as far away as, you know, two first-grade kids, they can space a little bit better. Uh, but obviously, really important on a bus, and, and the buses that I've been on anyway, you know, all the windows can crack and open, and getting that ventilation going in that bus is really, really important. So if we have good ventilation on a bus, we have, um, um, the kids all masked at all times, uh, and, and it's, it's, it's a distinct short period of time, you know, it could be fifteen, twenty minutes. It is hard to know because every route's different. I know the school districts, at least some of them, and we're trying to minimize the length of time the kids are on buses, they're adding routes, they're doing different things to minimize the number of children on a bus. Um, but if kids are wearing masks, this is a short defined period of time, you're increasing the ventilation as much as possible. Have, like you said, have siblings sit next to each other whenever possible, it's not always possible. You know, that's what we can do to minimize. Um, you know, because the idea that we could put, you know, one child per row or every other row, I don't think any school district in, in Bucks County could adequately bus the kids to school either. So th- this is an essential service. You know, uh, some parents, thankfully, are taking their kids to school. I know that the school districts have put out surveys, and there's a lot of parents that have decided, well, you know what, I can take my kids to school, I'll do that. And that'll help lower the, the density on the buses, and we're hoping that will help enough in Quaker Town and other places. Um, but again, this is, these are, these are short, um, these are short defined spaces of, of time. Uh, and, and, you know, they go as close as three feet as they can. Uh, but wearing that mask is the key part of that.
Some people are asking about screening. And I know, I, I believe that the recommendation is, is not that we do that. And so let the public know why that is the recommendation. What's the thought behind that?
Yeah, well, first, I can tell you, start with temperature screening, is that we know, because I've got that question all the time.
Yeah, temperature screening.
Yeah, in, in the, in the, is that what you, is your temperature screen?
Yes.
Yes, temperature.
Temperature screening, sorry, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I said, we do want a temperature screen, right?
Still want a screen, but yeah, okay.
But, but temperature screening is, 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 we've seen, and this goes even in, in children and adults to a large degree, that the majority of people either don't ever have a fever with coronavirus, or if they do have a fever, they've had multiple other symptoms before they got the fever. So they're gonna, they're gonna have a loss of taste and smell, and the runny nose, and the headache, and the cough or whatever. Then they get a fever, often longer into their, into their disease. And, and a lot of people literally never have a fever. They have a normal temperature the entire time they're sick with coronavirus. So, um, it's, it's sort of a, a two-pronged problem. Number one, it, it gives you a false sense of security, uh, because you say, oh, little Johnny doesn't have temperature today, he must not have COVID. And in reality, we know that that's not a good way of screening. And the second thing is, obviously, if you have five hundred kids in the school, you know, having them somehow be temperature screened when you're trying to get them in, that actually causes, you know, a, a social distancing issue when they're all crowded around the front of the school trying to get in. Um, so it's not something that we found to be, uh, recommended. Uh, I believe the CDC and the State Department of Health also don't recommend it. Um, so, um, I think that we're doing the right thing here in, in Quaker Town by not doing temperature screening of students and staff. But again, I can't emphasize this enough. It's the parents, they have to, they have to do the right thing. Uh, I know that not every parent will always do the right thing. And it's easy to say, because some parents, if they don't go to work, they can lose their job, they don't have sick time. I know it's a, it's a real problem. But i- i- I can't emphasize i- i- this anymore, that we're relying on our parents and our students to be honest about their symptoms, and not go to school if they're sick. And we know that, that traditionally, people do that. And that's why we have flu outbreaks. Flu spreads easier, you know, flu, we do have outbreaks of flu in our schools at times. And, and norovirus, the diarrhea virus, we, we have, we have things that happen. And it's, it, especially for the next several months, when we're going, when we're trying to reopen schools, when we're trying to make a dent in this virus, um, people have to be, take this extremely seriously and say, look, I know my, I know my son's not feeling well, but he's, he's got a test today, or he's got whatever, you know? This is where the virtual model could potentially be helpful. Again, every school district's different in how they're doing it. But we think it's really important that, that just don't send your kids to school sick. Um, and if we don't do, if we all do that, if we, most of us do it most of the time, I keep saying that because it's important, we're gonna prevent the spread of disease in, in, in our schools. Uh, and I can't emphasize that enough. I know it's not easy, it's something that we traditionally haven't done. We've kind of, you know, give the kid, you've heard the story, you give the kid the Tylenol, the ibuprofen, send him to school, about time they have a fever, school day's over, whatever. Those days have to be over now. Uh, and again, I know that it's, it's easy for me to say, because I'm not the one who's, you know, I could lose my job if my kid, you know, if I have to stay with my kid. And I know it's, it's, it's a very difficult spot people are in sometimes. Um, but again, that's, that's, this whole thing works if we, if, if we do that.
Sure. Testing is gonna be a critical part, I think, of all of this. And some people have been saying, you know, gosh, it's taken me five days to get my test back recently. What is, uh, what is your department thinking in terms of how to make, how are we gonna make that better? Especially with the influx of potential, you know, tests that are gonna take place when we reopen schools?
Yeah, the, right now, the one lab that's killing us is Quest. And C V S is using that in a lot of their situations and, and the places that a lot of people go into C V S, because a lot of C V S is, and it's not C V S's fault per se, it's because Quest is a, is a national laboratory, and they're getting hammered by Florida, Arizona, Texas, the other states that are having their big outbreaks right now. Uh, and I think I said, I don't know if I said this earlier, but it's important that we, we already had our outbreak. So this is why we're doing better than some of those other states that never had their big outbreak. But, so they're kind of going through theirs now, they're starting to peak, and now they're starting to plateau. So hopefully, those states will start doing better. Um, Quest did say they're opening up additional, you know, facilities, hopefully to start getting those times down. Uh, but it doesn't do any good. If I go get tested on June, if I go get tested on July first, and my test doesn't come back till July fifteenth, I, I'm already, I've already done my ten days of isolation, I'm already clear, before my testing came back, right? Even if I had coronavirus. So it doesn't do a lot of good, it makes contact tracing more difficult. So what I'm gonna try to do is, and this is, it doesn't help Quaker Town as much, but I'm working with, there's a lab in the lower end of the county, uh, near Action Valley Mall. We're working with them to, uh, open up hopefully five to six days a week. Uh, I may even be able to write a script for all Bucks County students and staff, like a standing order, where you could go under my prescription and get tested. Um, and again, that, it may not help you as much because next to Action Valley Mall, but we're working with this, we want to have an ability for these schools to have quick turnaround testing, because you're right, there, there's a real concern with Quest, and Quest is one of the largest labs in the country. But lab corps is doing better. Uh, just today, we had multiple results back where people were tested on the twenty-seventh, that's really just two days. So I think that there are some labs that have, that are, that are doing better. We're seeing, I think, that the testing time has gotten better from a lot of different labs, but Quest is the one that it happens to be very commonly used. And people are frustrated, and I totally get it. But I'm also gonna work with, I'm gonna try to find a location at the upper part of the county that will help our school districts up there, that we can do something similar, where it can't be everybody, it can't be for all the families too, but it could be for the actual staff and/or the students that could able to, to, to get a test with a quick turnaround. Uh, and I'm working through that, it may, it's not as easy as it sounds, uh, because a lot of primary care doctors won't even give you a script unless you have symptoms. And, and, and this wouldn't be for people just to get random tests because they feel like it, there, there should be a reason why. We're not, we're not saying just, you know, every day I'm gonna go get a test today. It's gotta be for people that have a real reason to go. And we can get into the details of that procedure, you know, as we get forward. But I am working on that. Um, again, I know it's a problem, and there's nothing worse than getting a test back two weeks after you were tested, because you've already been home for the entire ten days, you're already over coronavirus, and you, we may, you know, it, it doesn't do anybody any good. So we understand it's a problem, and we are working on that.
Great, great. It's about seven thirty almost, and I haven't, I apologize to, to the rest of the public. There's still a couple of questions left, but at this time, I do feel like it's fair. I know some board members probably, I don't want to keep you past eight o'clock at all. You committed an hour, and I'm kind of stealing too here. So, um, so anyway, I just wanted to open it up to other board members. We did cover a lot of information, but I'm sure that they might directly want to ask you a question or two. So I will open up the floor to board members who want to ask some questions.
I got, I got a quick one, because I, I've spoke to Dave, or Dr. Demansker a few times, uh, leading up to this, and I was part of the tour on Monday. So a lot of my questions were answered then. But the one thing I, I did want to have him speak a little more on is, when we were, um, staging these rooms, and it, it looks really promising that we would be able to achieve getting most of our students back at four and a half to five foot of spacing. And that's with, you know, we were basically not even counting any virtual students. We were taking the full enrollment from last year's classes and still getting four and a half to five feet of spacing. So you would feel comfortable having us send our kids back with four and a half foot to five foot of spacing if they stayed masked. And even if we did achieve six foot, try to keep them masked anyway, um, just to help to prevent the, the spread of the disease any further.
Correct. You know, and, and the governor's order does require that even if you are six feet apart, you're supposed to remain masked, except for the mass breaks, or, or eating lunch. And again, the mass breaks, that's up to the school district to figure that out, how long they are. But the six feet's important, right? This, once you're six feet away, the vast majority of droplets go at three, there's a few more that go to six. Um, and, and, and that, that is a safe way of being. And, and, um, you know, I think it's important, there's a picture, I think, of some of us sitting at the chairs.
Yeah, Caitlin got those pictures, that's why I was.
And I think it's great, if you can put one of those up, she, she sent, she texted me one, I think it was great. Um, you know, and these are adults sitting in chairs that are made for, for much smaller kids. And if, and I think if the average person looked at, at this picture, it, it, the distance actually looks reasonable. Uh, I certainly would feel comfortable, you know, being in a situation like that. I know I, I certainly would feel comfortable putting, you know, my children in a situation like that. Uh, it does far exceed, because, because the difference is, people are thinking three feet. It's, if you do three feet from a desk edge to desk edge, remember, that gives you the additional space um, to the middle of that desk where the child's actually sitting. The child's not sitting at the edge of the desk, they're sitting at the middle of the desk. So that's why the three-foot desk edge to desk edge becomes four and a half feet, or even longer, depending on how big the desk is. Uh, and, and again, uh, looking at those pictures, uh, and sitting in those chairs and feeling the distance, I think that is a safe distance, absolutely.
Yeah, so four and a half to five feet, if we could achieve that across the district, I felt comfortable seeing that, much more than I did when we tried the desk at three feet, center to center. It, it definitely did look tight, but, you know, certainly at five feet and at six feet, it, it would even be better if we could reach that.
Yeah, and I think if we, we actually moved the desks at one point, six feet desk edge to desk edge, and I think you could fit like three people in the classroom, you know? It was almost, that's actually closer to like eight feet, or seven and a half, eight feet, if you do six foot edge to edge. Um, but I do believe that, you know, the four and a half, five feet, it's clearly over the floor minimum that we, that we've, that we've allowed. Uh, and it's, it's pretty darn close to the six feet. And, and again, six feet's okay. People are, throughout the country, when they're six feet apart, they're removing their masks in meetings and other places. Um, you know, the governor's order here in Pennsylvania, it says to keep it on inside all the time, this is what we'll do. But, um, you know, you're getting pretty close to that six-foot distance. And I believe, uh, that, that you can, you can open up safely when everyone's keeping their masks on at all times when you're within that six feet.
Well, we have some teachers and, and other people that have been saying, you know, anything below six feet is just unsafe. So you, you're refuting that then?
Well, I am, and, and if you talk to the CDC, you talk to the, the state of Pennsylvania, they will say that you do the best you can to reach it. But no one is saying that if you go, you know, a foot below six feet, everyone's gonna get sick. No one's saying that. Uh, I think that's important to remember, that, that, that the guidance is very clear. Um, you know, I, I believe that, you know, the CDC said that again recently, that, you know, don't get hung up on the six feet. It's, you simply, you go as close as you can to it, and you follow the other guidelines, sanitation, masking, and social distancing, all in combination is what we're looking at here. It's not just one thing. I, I don't want anyone to get hung up on that one particular thing.
Yeah.
Kid, can I interject here? If it's under six feet, doctor, um, does that mean that you need to stay masked? My understanding is that the rec, recommend, recommendation is to wear a mask at all times.
Correct, if you're under six feet, you must remain masked, that's correct.
Dr. Damster, do you have a sense for any kind of metrics about number of cases that might be concurrent i- in our school district? Or, you know, in our staff and kids? That would raise your alarm bells and conversely, any kind of, hey, look, nothing's happened for six months, maybe we can relax? Like, have, have you studied or come up with any of those kind of guidelines yet?
Well, I think what we can say is, uh, again, what, what worries me, I think I mentioned this earlier, is if we start seeing spread in the school, not from outside of the party, not from a teacher getting it from their wife, but from an actual spread within the school. And we'll, and we have to look at, why did that happen? And if we can figure out what happened, okay, maybe a bunch of kids didn't wear their masks, or shared a drink, or something they shouldn't have done, or was it just, you know, it's starting to spread in schools? And we don't think that'll happen, but we, we're always, we're always looking for that. This is why we're doing the investigations to see what's gonna happen. Now, there's a, a lot of the countries in Europe, they, some of them started off doing different things. You know, I know Denmark, for instance, started off doing six feet. Then they realized that there wasn't any problems, they went down to three feet. Uh, and then they, some of the, some of the schools in Europe are gonna open up with no masking in three feet. So, you know, the, the, I think, but it takes, sometimes it takes a month or two to go. And I, I agree, we'll be looking at that all across, any, every school district that has in-person teaching, whether it's full in-person, whether it's a hybrid model, we're gonna be monitoring this extremely closely. We're spending a lot of time on schools, because we kind of know the data now. We know what's going on in other places. So we have, I, I'm gonna have some nurses and myself, we're gonna be focusing a lot of our attention and energy on our schools and monitoring things. If we see, hey, we're not seeing any spread in schools, and I'm seeing, I'm sure the state will also notice that, you know, statewide, because I can't override the governor's order. Uh, they might decide to say, hey, we're okay with three feet, and start with that, and say, everyone keep a mask on, but this three feet can be, can be shrunken. Or they might say, we're getting rid of all, you know, distancing guidelines, but everyone still has to keep their mask on. And there's, there's, there's several options that could happen. Uh, and that, that's not an unreasonable thing either, to say, you know, we're, we're keeping everyone's mask on at all times, but we're gonna eliminate the three-foot minimum. Or, and the state wouldn't even say that, because they haven't admitted the three-foot minimum anyway, right? But, um, but overall, I believe that it's gonna take a little bit of time. Uh, we're gonna see, hopefully, that if we're all following the rules and following what we're supposed to do, then we're not gonna see transmission to schools. what we're supposed to do, then we're not going to see transmission to schools. Can't say it won't ever happen. Again, I never say it never in medicine because as soon as you say it never happens, it happens. But, but we do feel comfortable, given everything that's happened in other places, that if we do all these techniques, we can keep the intra, intraschool spread down.
Got it. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Doctor, I have to interject here and ask a question because a lot of comparisons are made to the studies in Europe. But our situation here locally, I agree, is, is pretty decent. But as a country, wouldn't you agree that we cannot be compared to Europe as far as how the COVID virus has been contained there compared to here?
Yeah.
In other words, you know, people could travel to Florida and bring it back. And that's a real concern I have, that we don't have the, we can't be compared to Europe completely because our situation is totally different as a nation. Would you agree with that?
I, yeah, I certainly would agree with most of what you said. I do think though, that if you, if you have kids that are sitting six feet apart with masks on, you know, whether you're in Florida or Pennsylvania, or, you know, the idea of spreading in that classroom should be the same. Yes, I agree with you totally that you may be introducing more virus to that school if you're in a high prevalent situation. There's no question about it. And we are lucky, and I say lucky in quotes, but we did have our spike earlier and we're, we're one of the states that hasn't had a big uptick. And so, so you're right, we do have a different prevalence than, than other states do. But the, the overall idea behind keeping people apart and masking in a school situation should be successful, you know, hopefully regardless of what the prevalence is. And I hope that makes sense what I'm saying. It's the, the techniques that we're doing, you know, if you have, if you have a student that comes to school who may just have a right nose, they shouldn't be in school anyway, but if they are in school, the right nose, if they're all wearing masks and they're sanitizing their hands and they're remaining apart from their students, we shouldn't see spread. So I totally understand what you're saying, but Europe, you know, they did, you know, they did have cases in Europe. I can't, obviously, United States is the worst country in the world right now. There's no question about it, you know, from numbers of cases. But, you know, countries were able to continue to open, you know, whether Sweden or other countries that did have cases. And they were, they were able to keep their schools open utilizing some of these same techniques. And so I hope that makes a little bit of sense. I'm not saying that we're the same as Europe, of course not. But some of the same techniques that we're, we're starting off pretty strict with good social distancing, full masking. And I said earlier, that we're hoping that over time, we'll be able to see the effects of that and hopefully be able to reduce those things. But I'm definitely not saying that we're the same as, as Denmark today, of course. But we do see the trends in those countries that as the cases go down, and the cases in, in our state have gone down, and we're hoping that Florida, Arizona, California, they aren't, their peak is already starting to, you know, level off and plateau. And hopefully they'll all be doing what we're doing here. And the governors there will all require universal masking if they haven't already, they have in some states, and get it back down to sort of where we are now. So they'll feel comfortable going back with some of the same guides that we're using here.
So masking is really important, isn't it? Because I've been receiving emails from members of this community, because I made comments about masking a couple of weeks ago at a board meeting. And I've received some pretty nasty emails from people who are anti-maskers, frankly. And we know where they get that from. And I want to hear you say, as the expert, how important masking is and that these kids need to be masked during school.
I agree with you. I do. I believe that children should be masked. The evidence isn't great in the smallest kids, and we went over that earlier. That's why hopefully maybe a face shield's better for those because, as I said, it's, it is difficult to have a first, second, third grader wearing a face mask the entire day. It's hot and uncomfortable. That's why, one of the reasons we offered the face shields. But I agree with you that masking, especially in the older kids, no question about it, that they need to be wearing a mask when they're within six feet at all times. And I think that for everyone's, you know, it, even if someone doesn't believe that a mask is doing everything, is doing anything, from a, from a, I guess from a perspective of someone to say, hey, look, you know, we're doing this to help everyone here. And you, we're, we're a team. And I said, I don't love wearing a mask eight hours. I don't know anyone who loves wearing a mask eight hours a day. But we do know that when you're talking, sneezing, coughing, and the droplets go into that face shield or that face mask, that helps reduce the spread. And I think that children in school at this point, you know, should be wearing masks or face shield, whatever, whatever that they choose. And I'm saying right now, I believe that especially, you know, that, that we need to see, we have a level of cases that we can do this. I think we can go back to school safely, but that safety now includes masking.
You can't tell that Jenny's an attorney at all, right? Jenny, you're leading the witness?
I am, but I really wanted the community to hear that because I have received personal emails whose names will remain unmentioned, that have been ridiculously vitriolic and have a very political agenda frankly, about masking. And it's every doctor I've represented or epidemiologist I've talked to in my practice has told me how important masking is. And I wear a mask eight hours a day now at work too.
Whoops. Go ahead.
I'm done.
Okay. I wanted to bring up one more thing real quick and then I'm going to mute.
Before you go, I was going to say before Chris, you already got a chance, one chance. Let me see if, let me see if someone, yes. Is anybody who hasn't asked Dr. Damsler a question, would they like to ask any questions?
Yeah, actually, I had a question. Dr. Damsler, you earlier mentioned that, or went through a scenario where people shouldn't go over to their friend's house, I think you called him Bob, and, you know, get closer than the six feet. They should be smart about doing that. It increases the risk. But then when Chris asked you about the three, four and a half and five feet, you were okay with sending kids back into those situations. Can you talk about the, the distinction there? Because that sounds like it's contradicting itself to me. I'm not sure if I understand.
Yeah. First of all, you know, in a school structured situation, the kids are wearing masks. We just talked about that, you know. And you're in a structured situation, you're being monitored by teachers, you're being, you know, so that, that's a huge difference between, you know, a friend going to his house and, and sitting next to each other. And if friends aren't asking, especially kids, they don't usually say, hey, before I come to your house, John, and play Fortnite with you, are you sick? They don't ask each other this question. They just go, right? So I believe that the structured nature of the, of the school, being in a classroom with a teacher enforcing it, and kids wearing masks, I think is a different situation than someone going to a party, sitting around, you know, drinking or whatever they're doing, playing games, and not paying attention to other people's symptoms, you know, sharing drinks, all the kind of stuff that people can do without masks on. And most times people don't go to each other's house with masks on. They just don't, right? You don't go to your friend's house with masks on. So I think there is, there is a difference. And hopefully that made a little sense.
So basically, it again comes down to masks. You won't go to your friend's house without a mask, even if you stay six feet apart. But you'll go to school as long as you have the mask on, you're okay. Did I understand it right?
Yeah. If you're asking whether a mask makes a difference, it does. Yes.
No. Yeah, I knew that, but that's not, I was trying to.
I think that to clarify your point though, Brian, is, is, is if you're, if you're outside of the six foot, you know, theoretically, you probably wouldn't need a mask, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you're outside and you're six feet apart, theoretically, you wouldn't need a mask.
But you don't.
Come together, your, your, your spread is higher. And, and that's where the mask barrier comes in on both the, the person who's potentially sick and the person who doesn't want to get sick.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. If I didn't answer your question, please ask me, please ask me again.
No, I think, I think you did. Like I said, it just seemed like there was a contradiction in what you were saying earlier compared to what you said in response to Chris's answer. Or I'm sorry, to Chris's question.
Keith, you don't have any questions? Just so you know, by the way, Keith on our board is a nurse practitioner. And so I, I was, I'm surprised Keith, that you don't have any questions, but I guess we maybe answered them all?
No, and I think you did a great job of really kind of explaining what we know and, and what are practiced and, and daily in, in hospitals. And we've seen in our, our hospitals as well. I mean, I agree with him that the, the numbers are staggeringly low on the number of COVID patients we have. And, and, you know, I scratch my head all the time thinking about, you know, when, when this low level that we see in these intermittent spikes, I think it's probably going to stick around for a while like that, months if not years, until we have either vaccine or herd immunity, whichever comes first. And so a 0% case, and we talked about this early on, I don't think we're going to get to that point as a community. And I agree with him 100% that, that I, I feel very comfortable in a mask, being, taking care of COVID patients every day. It's just part of what we do.
Awesome. Thank you for your comment. Any other board members that haven't talked yet before I get back over to Chris? I have one more question too, that from the community, but any other board members?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Damsler for meeting with us at the high school the other day and taking the time to join us on this meeting and answer these questions.
Sure.
Yeah, it was really good. There was a comment in there, you know, he hasn't toured our schools or something. And, and I think it was above and beyond that you came out. And it was great for us too, as board members, to see what that looks like. And by the way, to the community, I will show you guys some of those pictures so you can get a visual on that. We had a question, I feel like it's a very important one to address. People are wondering about special needs students and wearing masks. And we know that some of our special needs students won't be able to do that. Do you have any advice on how we navigate through that?
Yeah, there, there's, there's, there's going to be kids, and again, every school is a little bit different. Some of the kids are mainstreamed to the classrooms and they're there all day. Sometimes they're in a separate room for part of the day. And I can't, I don't know exactly how Quakertown does it. But yeah, there's some kids who won't be able to wear them. And the staff who take care of those kids, you know, one to one sometimes, obviously, I think they have some concerns. And I think you can try, you know, there, there are, and I've spoken to parents that have special needs, kids with special needs, and they have been able to get their kids to wear masks at times. So it's, it may not be all day, it may not be every day. But I do think that we hope that we ask all parents to, to make that attempt, because some of the children are able to do it. And that, that's the first step, even if it's not all day, even if it's just for portions of the day. I think that obviously that the aides need to be, to be, to be careful. They need to be wearing, obviously, sometimes, you know, there, there's times where there could be spit involved, other, other actions, where they may want to wear a face shield and a mask depending on the, the situation. But I do think that, you know, that, that the aides need to, or that the, the, whatever the name, I want to say the wrong thing, I apologize. But whoever's taking care of the kids with special needs clearly have a, have a higher risk. But as we said earlier, you know, our overall prevalence here is low i- in the Quakertown School District. So the chances of one of those children with special needs having coronavirus is, is very low. Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that there's no risk involved. Of course there is. But those parents, those, those, the teachers and the staff that deal with those children should be extremely careful with the PPE that they're wearing and maintain that at all times. And it's not an easy job. I, I have deep respect for those that, that work with those children. I know it can be difficult. It can be, but I know it's rewarding and I just want to do it. But, you know, we've gotten questions from school nurses about, you know, nebulizers and all kinds of inhalers and things. And we've tried to address those, you know, through the, the school health nurse coordinators as they've come up.
Thank you for answering that. All right, Chris, back over to you.
Okay. So now, now comes my sort of wrapping up question that if, if we do, we're going to have this discussion now at whether we're comfortable sending our students back with our desks spread apart four to five feet, up to six feet in, for the five day returning students. Our option is, i- if, say, we get too much pressure from the teachers or we get too much pressure from uncomfortable parents going below that six foot threshold, you know, even only to four and a half or five feet, the option for us is to go to a forced A B schedule where the kids will go to school two days a week, and then they'll have the other three days a week off. And then the next group will go two days a week and have the other three days off plus the weekend. So my, my question, and I sort of talked to you about this outside of this meeting, but could there be, or is there, do you think, more danger in having the kids outside of school for that long than there is to having them in school but spaced less than six feet, like say four and a half or five feet?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the hybrid model, obviously, there's, there's pros and cons to every one of the models. But what I can tell you is the hybrid model is the teacher is still going to be exposed to the same children every week. If the children are there Monday, Tuesday versus Monday through Friday, and the kids are there Thursday and Friday versus the whole week, the same numbers of children are still going to be in those classrooms. So if a child's parents infect them and the child comes to school with COVID because their parents went to Florida, that child's still going to be in school. And so it doesn't really decrease the, the effect that, of the, the idea that we could, we could keep COVID out of our schools using the hybrid model. And I won't get into the logistics stuff because I know that's a school thing, but the logistics of a hybrid model can be difficult. They're all, but they all have pros and cons. I think it's important though, that, you know, wearing a mask at four and a half feet is still a very effective way of, of stopping spread. And, and saying that, you know, wearing a mask at six feet won't have any spread, it's not true either. There's no number of feet where you can say, other than me and you being in the same Zoom call, you and I will not transmit any disease hopefully at this rate. You know, four and a half to five feet versus six feet, i- it's a very minor difference. And that, that study the last set showed that, that once you get to that, that three foot has a big risk, a big reduction of risk in, in, in transmission risk. And then it gets a little bit better as you, each meter goes out. But, but the idea though, that you're, whether you're five feet or six feet and wearing masks all day, I don't believe that, that there's much of a difference in risk of spreading between children, children that are wearing masks. And I know, again, keeping kids out of school two days a week versus, you know, the five days, those kids are still going to be in that school regardless of whether it's two days or five days. So if a kid has COVID from home, they're still coming to school. And it doesn't really have much of an impact on that at all. So, you know, into six feet versus five feet, it's very difficult to say if there's, if there's any, you know, minor or small difference in the infection risk difference.
Well, it's the amount of time they're outside of the school then too, that will be increased. So wouldn't they potentially be bringing in more potential virus because they'll have more time to go over to their friend's house and play Fortnite or, you know, go to the park and share a vape or, you know, whatever kids do that puts them in danger these days?
I agree 100%. You know, being inside of a school in a structured environment, you know, you know what they're doing, you know where they are, they're being monitored all day. And if three days a week, you know, again, every model's different. There may be models where you are forced to be watching your TV, you know, the, the screen of a live presentation or whatever the teacher's doing. So those, those children may be required, but they're, they may be unmonitored at home. They may have two working parents that aren't seeing what the kids are doing. And you're right, they could be doing other things at higher risk behavior. So, you know, there is no really, there's no evidence. There's some modeling that shows that having, you know, there was a big model that I think that, that the, I think the state of Pennsylvania commissioned, it talked about hybrid models. But, but this has never really been done before. And, and I believe that there's definitely some disadvantages in the hybrid model versus the in-person model. But every, every, everything has its pros and cons. And obviously, you guys have to talk through those. But, you know, from a perspective of keeping COVID out of schools, those same kids are coming into school whether it's two days or five days.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry, but doesn't that mean though, that if there's, if we're using the A B model, wouldn't that limit the number of people in the classroom at any one time, which would then limit the risk to those people? And then ideally, we're supposed to be cleaning the rooms after every day. So the people that are coming in would, would have an even less risk. Is, am I misunderstanding that?
No, no, I'm saying that.
What you're saying about people and more exposure outside, but if they're coming into the school on an A B schedule, then there's only 15 people in the classroom as opposed to let's say 22, 25, or even less. Maybe there's 12 in the classroom, whatever it might be. So now they're only risking those 12 to whatever potential exposure they might have, as opposed to, you know, a full day where, where there might be more students in the classroom and they would be exposing more. That, that seems to me to be the benefit of the A B model. I agree with you, the A B model is terrible on so many levels and things like that. But it does seem to have some benefits to me, and I'm not sure where that comes in.
Well, I would say that, yeah, if you have a room with five people versus a room with 25 people, now this, there's, that cohort is smaller. So if, if one of those kids got the other four sick, you know, you would have a, it's easier to quarantine five versus 25. I understand that model. But, but what we're saying is though, that if everyone is at five feet and they're wearing masks and they're doing a good job, the, the small risk benefit difference between five feet and six feet in, in the classroom is probably, you know, again, this is up to you guys to consider the test, the risks and the pros and the cons. But the benefit of that is probably, you know, is probably minor in that. And I can't say that every time you're further apart, you know, if you're six feet, you have less risk of spreading it than when you are when you're, you're someone face to face. If you're 12 feet, there's less risk of exposing someone than you are six feet. But the incremental risk, you know, gets smaller and smaller as you're further apart.
All right, let's, Dr. Damsler, we're going to get one more question from another board member on Jackson. Sir, would you like to ask a question?
Dr. Damsler, up here, I think we've laid out pretty clearly that we're one of the outliers and we don't have a lot of cases out here in, in Quakertown area. I think we've done a good job of showing what the risks are and that I think we're probably mitigating them. But some of the other school districts in the area are actually starting virtual and then going to take it a little, you know, a wait and see approach. Is there any benefit to that? Because I'm trying to figure out why they would waste their time. This is my opinion. Why bother? Is there any benefit to that?
Um, I mean, certainly, you know, they, they have decided that they, you know, it could be for multiple reasons. It could be because they, they have trouble fitting the kids in, you know, whatever the spacing is in individual schools. There's some schools that just have, they literally can't even do three feet really in some of the schools. And, and they've made the decision that for now, they're going to see how it goes with the virtual or hybrid model because it helps with the spacing. Some, you know, most of the school districts, I believe there's only one in Bucks County that's opened up with a full virtual for the first couple of weeks. I believe that's Council Rock. And they're going to move to a virtual or a hybrid choice, you know, as they go. But they've made the decision, their board made the decision that they don't, that they want to see how it goes in Quakertown or in the other school districts that have voted to have a full in-person model. You know, Central Bucks has the full in-person model for the elementary school. And that's a decision they made. You know, I, I, I'm a believer, I wouldn't be sitting here telling you that I thought it was unsafe, or I wouldn't be sitting here telling you that. And I believe that you can make the decision. And the masking really does make a difference. I know that, and I apologize, the board member who asked me about the masking, I didn't, I forgot her name, I apologize.
Jenny.
Oh, yeah. And, and, you know, I obviously, you know, I'm saying on this conference call that I believe masking works and that, that that's a huge part of this. And, you know, that I'm not sure why, you know, other than watching school districts across the country, you know, the, you know, Philadelphia just changed their model. And I'm not, I can't really tell you why. They went from a hybrid model to a virtual model. And there's some other school districts across the country that decided to do that. And it's part of that is because some of them have a higher prevalence. Part of them, some of it's because it's school districts, you know, just didn't feel comfortable. They, they're, they're, spending a lot of time. Like I said, I don't, I don't watch CNN. I said this before, my data that I get is from Bucks County. We have, you know, 6,400 cases now. My data that I get is from Bucks County. We have, you know, 6,400 cases now. We try, we contact trace 96 to 90%, 97% we can't get them all because they don't call us back. We have really good data here in Bucks County. We know what's going on. We know how the transmission is working. And, uh, you know, we feel comfortable making these recommendations. And, uh, you know, and I think that, that I, I'm sitting here to you today, telling you that this is what I believe based on. My experience and based on what we've, we've worked really hard. I'm so proud of the staff at the Bucks County Health Department. All the work that's been done, you know, since the, since the end of February. And, um, you know, we believe that with the masking and the distancing and the sanitizing and all the policies, you guys have a long. You know, the, the entire matrix of your health and safety plan has a lot of things in there. And if you go back to what we were doing in March, we weren't doing any of that or very little of that. And so going back to school is going to look a lot different in a couple of weeks or a month, whatever it is. Uh, I think you guys are going back September. In, in, in that time period. So it'll look a lot different than it did in March when we closed schools. I think it's going to be a lot safer. And I think that there's a lot of things that we're putting into place that it's a different environment. And some of it, I agree. There's a question earlier you asked me about, is it different for the kids? Sure, it's going to be different. But I think our kids are willing to do that, to get back to the social and all, and the all of the educational and, and, and emotional advantages they get from, from being in school. So. That's kind of my take on it.
And it's temporary that we have to keep our eyes. On the fact that it is temporary and hope that it ends sooner than later.
And if they don't want to go back, they can go virtual 100%.
Correct. Yeah.
And, and, and just to mention, I, I do think that we have to. Get used to this virus a little bit. I hate to say that. I don't mean that in any kind of way. I'm not, I'm not being. You know, saying it's not a bad, but it is, it's, it's a real virus. It's out there. But my concern though, is that this virus could be with us. For an extended period of time. And, you know, we talked about having a vaccine. The vaccine may, may or may not work. It may or may not be available in the sufficient quantities to, to, because our children are probably not going to be the first kids to get the vaccine. They're going to focus on, on the long-term care facilities. That's the highest death rate. So, you know, maybe a long time before there's enough vaccine produced. So I believe that we need to say. You know, the situation right now as we have it, we, we could be having, we could be plateauing this number of cases for a year. And we believe. That if the safe way to bring the kids back, if you follow the guidelines, if we do all those things, if we decide to go virtual now. There's some of these school districts may never be able to bring their kids back. The situation gets just a little bit worse. And I think it's really important that we understand. I've had that time that, that this is, this could be a long-term situation. And we are lucky here in, in Quagertown and Pennsylvania, Bucks County, that we have the prevalence rate to be able to do this safely. And, and I say that, and I believe we can.
Dr. Damsker, we are truly appreciative that you took out your time in your busy day. I know. Just from talking to you that you're working super long hours. You have really dedicated yourself to the health and wellness of our county. So thank you so much for taking out the time. You've given us a lot to think about. You've answered some really tough questions. So I appreciate your patience. As we've asked them, I appreciate all the information. And with that, we won't keep you any longer. So unless you have any final remarks. Then you can go enjoy the rest of your evening and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I do. Thank you. Thank you guys all for having me. I appreciate best of luck in the decision-making. And best of luck to the Quagertown School District. Thank you. And thanks to all the teachers and the parents and the staff. I know this is tough for everybody. I do. But I think we can do it safely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
I was going to tell them to run before Chris asks his next question.
That's a fair point. That's a fair point. I'm going to share my screen because I do want to show people. Some of these pictures. So bear with me here. You guys can see my screen, right? You guys can see it?
Yeah, that's working.
Uh, so.
I guess, I guess we had to hold Chris back a few years.
Oh my goodness. Yes, we did. So as you can see, so this is six foot distancing and, and as you can see, like. We all know that more distance is better, that that is clear. So this is just to give you an idea. I was actually pretty shocked by the, how much of spacing it looked like with six feet. But it, we're going to have a couple more pictures in here. So. Now this was the three feet. This is where, you know, I didn't feel comfortable with that at all. You could tell just from the difference, it's such, it's staggering. So that where I have it circled there, that was three foot of distance. And, and I think we all agreed, no, that, that just, that looks really tight. It looks tighter than it would be in a normal classroom. This was our four and a half foot distancing. Why does my picture seem off here? Hold on, sorry guys. Why does it? Seem a bit off. Okay. Let's see if that's better. All right. So this was four and a half foot distancing. That gives you a little bit of an idea of how, how that looks. I'm going to need some help on this one. Rob, do you know? If I can't, and Chris said, and I apologize ahead of time. This, I believe this was five foot of distance.
This was the six when we first went in.
Okay.
Yeah, at five, I think we had almost all the desks in there. This is.
Okay.
This is Mr. Ween's room.
Yeah. So we felt pretty comfortable. I can tell you guys. We were able to fit, um, and, and Chris or Dave, you know, or Dr. Horner, you guys can correct me here. But I, I feel like we were able to fit a, a full classroom at four and a half feet. So what that tells me based on the registrations and, and we'll hopefully get an update on that tonight. If we can fit every, like 24 kids in a classroom at four and a half feet, knowing that we're going to have people who are going to sign up. For full virtual for hybrid, I feel pretty comfortable. Depending on what the numbers come out, that we, we're going to be able to get a lot closer to, to that six foot distancing. Do you guys agree with that based on your observation?
I do. I mean, if we were in the high school, we had those desks, the full classroom of 23 desks there was. In that first classroom we were in at five feet. And that was 23 desks at five feet. The room was a little bit bigger in there. And that was the full class from last year. So if, if you take 20% of those students out or, or 15% of those students out even. We, you know, that should give us the six feet that we needed. Now. I, I understand that, you know, just going off of percentages that sign up for virtual isn't necessarily going to. Equally take that many kids out of every classroom across the district that, you know, some, there may not be many kids that were taking. AP calculus or whatever class. That want to go to a hybrid or virtual. So we may not have. It may not be as balanced as, as we would like, but I think we could make it work to get. All of the kids that need to and want to get back. The opportunity to get back.
Yeah. And so my comment, because I did have a lot of, you know, my friends who are teachers reach out to me and say, oh, such and such is going virtual to start. I do believe, just my personal opinion, they're just delaying the inevitable. I think they eventually all want to go back to some kind of in-person classrooms. And maybe they do want to wait and see. Luckily being where we are, I can tell you, I know schools in Alabama are starting up next week. So we will also get some time to see how school reopening goes. Because we have schools that are starting a little bit sooner than us. But these other ones that are like that, you also have to consider. Especially more low-income school districts, those schools have a very large number of kids in a classroom. And so they may not be able to have the distancing that's, that's needed in those classrooms. You know, we just don't know.
And the, I was just going to say the, the key, the key for me is that they're going to be on top of. The number of cases and, you know, it's. We, we can guess all we want about the effectiveness, but we have multi-layers of risk mitigation and monitoring. You know, contact tracing, they're, they're going to be looking out, you know, so as long as. You know, we, we get. Close contact with that kind of data. And it will, will be. At least aware of things and be able to take action. You know, and, and prevent anything from spreading. So that's. Me, that's the best of all worlds.
I think we have over 35,000 people in, in our district. Is that right, Dr. Horner? In total, I think I looked it up. It was something like.
Thirty, 33,000, 33,000 and change.
So we have 25 cases. And again, we have to keep our eye on that if it changes, but that's literally 0.001%. Case infection in our community spread or not community spreading in our community in general.
That's mostly adults.
Yeah.
I think it goes back to one fundamental point. This is not going away. This is, this is going to be around for a while. Dr. Damsker said. He suspects it. A lot of the experts I talked to suspected. There is a new norm that has to develop and that new norm has to be with the focus of. Of us trying to get back to some normalcy for, for our kids. And one of the things I can't wait until the first testing comes out to look at our data. Because I'm convinced that, that the kids didn't learn well at last three months of school. I'm convinced of it. And I, I want to see our data. Maybe though, it'll prove me wrong and maybe my hypothesis is completely wrong. But I'm not convinced that, that the students got the education they need. And I, I, I feel bad that people are choosing the virtual route. I feel bad for Philadelphia. Where we know that one in two kids didn't sign even in one time. 50% of their kids didn't sign in virtually one time in three months. These are vulnerable populations to begin with. And, and then for them not to get the education, geez, are they getting fed? Are they, I mean. You know, it's just, it, it, it makes you really, really concerned for the future. If we just keep continuing with like this laissez-faire. Attitude, I think you can do it. I think you can protect yourself. We do it every day. I'm around COVID patients all the time. My staff is around COVID patients all the time. They wear masks. They clean their hands. They don't touch their eyes. They're fine.
Hey, I, I want to, I want to. Jump on and, you know, shout out to Keith for that. Statement because. We cannot continue to live in a hole anymore, you know. We cannot continue to put our lives, not just schooling, but so many other things on hold. Because of this, this issue. It's time to get back to. Living our lives again, but taking those extra steps of precaution that we need to take. We've got all the information we need, I think. We know what the safety precautions are that we should take. We know who the vulnerable people, for the most part are, and we can take extra steps and extra cautions when we're around them. But for the rest of us, we need to get back to life as. Normal as possible. We, we got to get moving again in schooling, getting our kids back in school is an important part of that.
And I agree, but the, the, my point has always been. If there is an extra step that we can take that increases the likelihood that people are going to be. Healthier and safer. Then I think we as a board are responsible to do that. And if that means setting up six feet as the model. Just even though there's only a limited benefit to it, that benefit is still there. I'm concerned about this new normal and what the kids are going back to. You know, we've talked a little bit about, and Dr. Damsker talked a little bit about. What that new normal would look like and kids are resilient and they are. But if you have kindergartners or younger kids who are going into a school. And it's so drastically different, they can't interact, they can't, they have to wear masks. It's a scary thing as it is. Now you're adding all of these other things onto it. I think that new normal. That we're talking about putting them back into. Is just as scary as. The situation we're in right now. So, you know, we talked about the benefits of mental health, but. We have to provide for the benefits of physical health before we can really solidify the benefits of the mental health. You know, it just goes back to some, some of the basic principles of Maslow and, and things like that.
But that's to my point, Brian. My point is that some of these kids aren't even getting the basic food. If you're Maslow's, food is a fundamental basis.
Absolutely.
Kids don't eat sometimes if they're not in the schools, school systems getting fed. And so that worries me.
And it, it worries me too.
And mental health should worry you as much as physical health, even if, if not more, because. The numbers would support, we can't use science one way and then not agree with it. The science would support that these kids aren't getting it. The science would support that the youngest kids aren't, aren't getting it.
No, I understand that, but I think what we need to do is, is do things additionally. Look, I'm not saying we shouldn't have kids back in school. I voted for this plan. And I think we should have an option for kids to go back to school. But I think we need to do everything within our power to do it safely and create the safest environment. And if that means sticking to our, to the plan where we, we start with six feet and say, this is how many students are going to be able to be in a classroom, for example. Then that's what I think we need to do.
So let me.
What you're saying about, you know. Kids with, uh, you know, food issues and not being able to get food. But that's, that's something we need to address outside of the school as well.
So let me, let me interject if I could, Brian. I was listening and I encourage everyone to go and listen to. Dr. Redfield, who is the CDC doctor, he's the head of the CDC. He just did an interview with the Bucks Institute. And he specifically says, I'm reading it. So I do think wearing a mask, washing your hands, maintaining social distancing, but the biggest thing about social distancing is the mask. So I don't want people to get hung up on six feet. If we're wearing a mask, these masks really work. These face covering, simple face colorings, covering, excuse me, really do work in interrupting the transmission. And I think the public is getting used to that. So I think that the CDC is, you know. This, this gentleman in particular, who he says. It, he has 11 grandchildren, including one who has cystic fibrosis. And he is saying that his guidance is not meant. So here we go. I just want to read through this. Um, the question was, the CDC put out guidance for school opening. There are school districts that are saying they're going to stay online and they're not opening. Other schools are doing hybrid. Um, the New York Times article, based on the internal CDC documents, warned that fully opening schools and universities would present the highest risk of infection. What is the risk of opening schools? Again. This is Ms. Dr. Redfield, he's answering. He said, yeah, I think it's important, particularly as you look at the CDC documents that you refer to. One of the things that we have tried to do is inform people of minimal risk, mild risk, et cetera. So for example, the risk was or minimal risk is just everybody stayed at home, period. And so obviously if we go to opening schools five days a week, that's going to be a hierarchical, high art. You can know, you know what I'm trying to say, risk. Okay. It's not to imply that the risk is a prohibitive risk. It's just for people to understand and make their own risk assessment. I think it's important and local school districts are going to have to make these decisions. I've said that our guidance that we put out from the CDC. The purpose is to facilitate the reopening of schools. I happen to balance the risk here. It's not the risk of school openings. This is important. It's not the risk of school openings versus public health. It's public health versus public health. And I'm of the point of view, and I weigh that equation as an individual that has 11 grandchildren. That the greater risk is actually to the nation to keep these schools closed. You know, a lot of kids get their mental health services, 7 million in school. A lot of people get food and nutrition in schools. Schools are important in terms of mandatory reporting sexual and child abuse. Obviously the socialization is important. And obviously for some kids, I think the majority of kids, they're learning in a face-to-face school is the most effective method of teaching. That said, it should be done safely and it has to be with the confidence of teachers. It has to be with the confidence of parents. So I think the reason I'm reading that guys is because I keep hearing people using the CDC. As a guidance to not get our kids back into schools. And it's clear from what he's saying. That we, 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 we can't, six feet is great if that's the goal. That's what we're going to try to get to, right?
That's not what we're saying. We're, we're not saying we're trying to keep kids out of school. We're trying to use the CDC guidance in order to get them into school safely. There's a difference there and, and I think.
But from the person that's doing the contact tracing, that's why I asked the question I asked specifically at the end. Is because I said. In your opinion, what is more dangerous? What poses more risk to the teachers in those classrooms? Having an A B model? Or only sending, or sending the kids back five days at five feet instead of six feet? And he clearly said that the risk of five feet to six feet is minimal. But the, the same exposure, if not more, would come upon those teachers by having the kids outside of the school for the other three days a week.
Chris, I don't mean to, to disagree and I, I really, I appreciate Dr. Damsker coming in and I, I respect the heck out of him. But this is a guy who wrote in a letter about two months ago that kids could be in a classroom three feet apart and they didn't have to wear masks. So. So I find his. Guidance, I'm skeptical of his guidance.
That's how a lot of European schools open. They, some, some did it completely without social distancing, without masks. So. You know, there, there is precedent. So we're.
Yeah, they also have.
Taking extra precautions. Is there something else, Brian, that you think we need to be doing?
Is there something else, Brian, that you think we need to be doing?
No, I I think that we need to do everything that is in our power. You know, so I'm I'm going to use social distance just as the example, but you know, if six feet is what the strictest recommendation is, then we need to set up the rooms, let's say, at six feet and say, that's the number of students that can fit in this room.
Despite the fact that the the guidance from the doctor is clearly saying.
Despite the fact, because as I just said to Chris, I don't know that I trust his guidance.
I'm talking about the CDC, the head of the CDC is what I just read. He said, don't get hung up on the six-foot distance, wear a mask, right?
I'm not getting hung up on the six-foot distance. I use that as an example.
You are.
You are.
I'm, no, I'm not.
Anyway, let's move on. So.
I think the bottom line is this, I think that you 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 have to take the science of this disease and say, what we did on March 15th is completely different than what we're doing at the end of July. And it's been clear, the evolution, I I've seen the evolution, I've I've read it, I've lived it. And so I I disagree with your statement from somebody who made a comment two months ago uh and maybe changing it. And I disagree with the news media that does the same thing and the people that say, you know, when, when, when scientists change the way that they approach things uh based on either new research or new literature that they're reading, or the more they find out about something, stuff changes. That's what we deal with daily. And so I I I'm sorry, I I gotta, I gotta believe. One of the things that I've been steadfast is saying that we know social distancing works, we know masks work, we know clean your hands work. We've known that about viruses forever. Forever. We're having this conversation today because of COVID. What we should have been doing is having it about influenza and common, you know, the common cold and parainfluenza, all the rest of the viruses that we deal with as a country every day.
So what would we need to do for Dr. Harner and Nancy Ann and the task force to to help them with guidance on how we want to move forward? I mean, our plan doesn't really necessarily have to change. I mean, we were already saying we we would go with the three foot of minimum spacing and we would keep the mask-wearing even beyond six foot, correct, Dr. Harner? Do we need to really change much or?
No, not, not a thing.
I don't think we need to either, because we said six foot when feasible, that's going to be the goal. Um, I think when we get numbers back, we'll be able to see what, how that shakes out. And, you know, if we can make it work, if we can, if it's possible for us to do. But I feel like that uh our plan offers some that flexibility.
And do we have numbers yet, Dr. Harner?
Oh, yeah, Dr. Harner, do you have, you guys want to share that at all?
Uh, Ms. Edwards, would you please give them a brief overview of what we know as of today, um, as of this evening, I think? She's there, I know she is.
We'll give her a second.
Good response rate.
Trying to unmute. Okay. Okay, now wait, I wrote all that down and I put it over here. All right, as of um this afternoon, we had received thirty-seven hundred responses um or registrations and that's students, not families, because each individual student got a SNAP code. So we have heard from about seventy-five percent of our of our students so far, which is good. The the deadline was tonight. We did get questions about could people wait to hear tonight's discussion before submitting their registration? We said yes. Um, principals and secretaries have been sending out reminders to families to register. And as we get the number smaller, they will start calling um people individually to try to make sure that we've accounted for every student. Um, so far, we are, um, the percentages and this varies by grade level and it varies by by building. Um, but overall, about sixty percent are choosing live instruction. Twenty-one point eight percent are selecting hybrid and seventeen point one percent are selecting virtual. So um it's similar, not that different from the the survey um information, which is good. Um, what principals are doing is calculating the exact capacity of every one of their uh classrooms based on a similar process that Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Spear, Mr. Akmanowicz, that they were kind of doing as an exercise on uh, I guess, earlier this week. Um, but that's what principals are doing uh with their custodians and such for every room in their building, so they know the capacity. And then they'll be looking at the number of students in the grade level that selected live instruction. And they'll be seeing how they can use the spaces in their building with the appropriate social distancing to accommodate the number of students per grade level that um that have requested that. So that's the, that's what they are engaged in. Um, and hopefully on August thirteenth, we'll have a a full report of what we, what we can do, what we can't do, what we can do, but what the consequences will be in terms of um the student experience and such. So that's what we as of today.
May, may I ask you to, um, what were those percentages again? Sixty percent requested live instruction? Was it twenty-nine percent hybrid?
Twenty-one point eight.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one point eight, seventeen point one, virtual.
All right, that that's why my numbers didn't add up. Thank you.
Dr. Harner, can you recall, isn't that approximately the spread we were looking for if we wanted to give everybody their choice? In other words, can't we get sixty percent live with twenty percent, the other two options, which is approximately what we have? Is that, is that not accurate or?
I would not want to say tonight.
That was what I recalled, Ron.
Okay, no, that's fair, that's fair. I I I'm not, I won't put you on the spot.
But we, I was put on the spot when I said that before. And I want to make sure that my answers are accurate tonight, so and 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 we don't have that yet.
Yeah, what Nancy Ann just described will get us the real numbers, so.
We still don't know.
Do we know, uh, what's the other people to uh to uh reply?
Well, we have to schedule every student, so deadline is sort of a um, that's the, we would like people to do it right away, but we will have to track families down one at a time and and account for the students that are missing.
Right.
Do we know if there, when will we get an idea of by grade level? You know, for instance, did we have more interest in a certain area by certain grade, that type of thing?
Well, the pattern is that there are certain grade levels that where there is a higher interest in live instruction than others. And those tend to be the transitional years, like sixth grade, ninth grade, senior year. And to some extent in the primary grades, but we will have all that for you once we have all the numbers and the principals have done their analysis for their own facility, because remember, this is a classroom-by-classroom exercise, so the global number only only tells us so much.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you for that update. I really appreciate it. If you haven't registered, register, please. Faster we get that done, the faster we can start to to really get a good picture and make plans.
I will say seventeen percent hybrid or or virtual, rather seventeen percent virtual. It's much higher than I ever would have predicted. I know it's not final yet, but.
Well, Ron, where you at, Ron? What did I, I I just want to tell you, Ron, I told you so.
I didn't think we'd get anybody wanting AB.
I told you so.
Live, why would you go AB? If you want to go AB, why would you go live? I don't, I don't, hey, it's not.
One of the, one of the points that Mr. Spears asked me questions or had comments for for months about it, about cyber school, and I asked the principals today of um how many requests for records? And they're very low numbers. We're talking close to somewhere right, or maybe a little bit over ten, ten families have parents have asked for ten students um for for cyber charter schools.
I I did have one additional question while you're unmuted, Dr. Harner. So at, I I I know you don't like to get locked in and I'm just saying, like theoretically, has the task force discussed at all having some dedicated virtual teachers? And if we are at sixty percent, or I mean twenty-one point eight percent hybrid and seventeen percent virtual, would that give us maybe some options to have some, some of the at-risk teachers be able to teach completely virtual?
That's a good question.
It's a great question and we've talked about that during the FAQs in the FAQs and the other night uh in both of those meetings, in the town hall meetings. If we have a teacher just teaching virtual and we have an outbreak, who is going to be teaching the students? So our model is that the teachers that have the students at home in asynchronous, um, maybe sometimes live in the morning meeting or something like that, will be the same teachers that are in the classroom. So the students can going back and forth, um, if they're sick, because we expect a lot of students will be staying at home, our attendance is going to be, not like it's at ninety-five percent. Um, it it's going to be lower because we're going to have issues. And so the model that we have going forward is with the teachers, no dedicated teachers to teaching uh virtual, none.
Yeah, I'm sure that that presents.
That is a challenge.
It's a challenge. And 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 you guys are, you're doing your best. I mean, this is so difficult to navigate. Um, it's, it's challenging no matter which way you go. I mean, it's kind of like, you know, we we're picking from two options that are the greatest options. So I did want to just mention, before we move on, that I've been hearing a lot from, and I know that you guys have something coming out too, but I've been hearing a lot from teachers that are stressed about how am I going to complete these three options? How am I going to manage, you know, all this? And so what I think is really important for us to do as a district, and you guys are about to put something more out on this, is to to really help our teachers know that we're going to support them through that and what exactly that's going to look like. So um hopefully, we get more details on that soon.
One of the things is we've got a very robust professional development opportunity in August. Um, a lot of parents have asked the question, why do we have a shortened class day um over the standard class day? And it's because of time. Teachers need to have time to be able to work with students in all the different environments that they have. Um, in the classroom environment, the home environments, the two, the two different environments, and we're providing them that time to do that. Um, otherwise, we wouldn't have the time um for them and we shouldn't have the expectation. But we're providing them time every day, a hundred and eighty days out of the school year to do it.
Do you think that we'll see more support from the district office in terms of? Um, I guess what I'm thinking is, if I'm a teacher, I I want to know, am I going to be a hundred percent responsible for the virtual um stuff or is it going to be, because I know it's going to be both synchronous and asynchronous. So are we going to have some support from the district administration in terms of helping them through that? Are they going to expect to do that individually on their own as class? Or are they going to sort of spread it out within each other? That's that's kind of the, some of the things I'm just curious about.
As I shared already, the support out of the Office of Teaching and Learning with Professional Development of our our coaches, Chad Evans, Aaron Alexka and Dr. Hoffman, they've got an incredible program laid on for for uh August, September and and during the school year. That's again, that's, we've got time. That's why in our model in the in the springtime was because some of the folks that that should have been working in Canvas, um, I I'm talking about the teachers working in Canvas before and have their model up. We provided that time back in April and uh early April to get them caught up to where they should have been. And so it's been, it's the, uh, every Friday in the, in April and May was a professional development day for all of this. So I feel very comfortable that teachers know how to use their learning management platforms. Um, teachers across first grade need to be talking to each other, teachers across second grade. As I've talked to Ryan, um, our um, our president of our of our Teachers Association, um, he teaches the math and science at the fifth grade level. We have fifteen to sixteen teachers per grade um in in our elementary schools. So there's about uh five, or seven or eight teachers um teaching math, because they're all compartmentalized. Those eight teachers that can break it, break, easily break down the year in CSO, have all their lessons in there. So if they're, um, if if when you have a substitute, we're going to have a, we're going to have a a teacher problem this year. We're going to have a substitute problem this year that, and and already, um, I I I can't speak for all the other areas, but I know one of our districts in in um, in the, in the county, um, it's very similar in size to us and and number of teachers and all that. Already forty teachers have applied for family emergency leave. And um under the Free Family Care Act, fifteen of them are special ed.
Wait, you mean, we're, not in our district?
Not in our district, in our county, already.
Okay, the county.
We, we have only had two so far, um, which is awesome, because the teachers were a part, our union leadership was uh participants in developing our health and safety plan. So I, I firmly believe if we stick with our health and safety plan, the me, the measurements in in our classes that we talked about back in June and early July, that that our teachers are going to stay with us. But but in other districts, they're already going out fifteen percent of one district is all, uh, their teachers have already said they're, they're not coming back until, um, I think, I think the date is December thirty-first, when the Family Care Act um is over. So that period is over.
To that point, and I think you bring up a really valid point um with, and I, and I've heard this discussed in the past with subs not being available and and, you know, the worry about what happens if somebody needs to be quarantined. Is there anything from a board level that that we should be doing or administrative level that that the board could act on? In other words, should we think about a year bringing on some more assistance internally and not relying on external? My understanding is we, we use a company for for
Yeah, yeah, for for our substitutes. Yes, or ESS, I think is their acronym for, um, they used to call the Source for Teachers was their previous name. They've changed their name. But the big thing that that I was going to start to communicating out to our families, because some of our families of people who are, have been either unemployed or whatever the situation, parents are at home. If they have a, um, if they could be, would become substitutes for us.
Um, should we hire our own internal, so we have like.
Well, the other, the other conversation I had, uh, was it today or yesterday with our, our president of our support staff is I encouraged Jan Detwiler, and she's probably on the call here, and and hopefully she's followed through with it, is to put out a message to her members and we'll, we'll do it ourselves through HR, is if the, our, our aides who are um have a bachelor's degree and getting them emergency certified. So if teachers are out, we have uh someone with that emergency certificate ready to step into the classroom. We already have a substitute problem. It's a, it's a constant problem that the that Ryan Lee and our association president talks to us every year about, and and we've talked to you, you know about that. Um, and because we talk about teachers and during the school day, they're, uh, we don't have enough subs. We, a teacher giving up their planning period. So they're not as well-prepared for their next class or teaching and 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 I think our situation is going to be um much worse this year.
Yeah, I have, and I was thinking, is there, is there a way, can, as a board, can we approve something that that gives a, you know, a full pool of of five people that we would pay every day for the entire year? And then we would rotate them as needed to implement. You know, just spitballing ideas here.
One of the things is that we've talked at the cabinet level, I've talked with other administrators with principals, elementary principal, middle school principals, our instructional coaches. Um, you know, this is not an unusual year. You looked at our FAQs, there, it's written all over there. Um, there's a lot of things we have to do that's different and hopefully for a short period of time. And one of them, we have the the math coaches and the uh and the reading coaches we have in each of our elementary buildings. Uh, we have intentionally kept them out of, for the most part, out of being the substitute teacher when, when we can't come up with subs. And they're going to have to, they're, they're going to have to fill the gaps, to fill the holes. And and then even, you know, as I talked in one of the meetings today, you know, call me. You know, uh, you know, I, I'm got an engineering background and I love social studies, so pick me. And I, I think moving up to the physics and chemistry would be a, a challenge, because that's been a while, but, but.
Did somebody on our administration?
Did somebody on our administration just volunteer to be a substitute?
I believe the top echelon just volunteered. That's what I heard.
I know that I, that I, at one of our schools, they were, they were, there were some issues with the teachers about it. And I, and I said, I do it. And as soon as I volunteered, those holes started filling up. So I, you know, I don't know.
I've heard a plan too with 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 someone who had told me that had substituted before here, said that we hire our subs through an agency.
Yes, sir.
The agency takes a pretty significant cut that if we hired subs directly, that we may be able to sort of get, we'd have a better pool of subs.
And more?
Yeah, I guess, you know, say a substitute teacher gets a hundred dollars a day through the agency, and maybe we pay the agency a hundred and twenty dollars a day. I'm making up numbers. I have no idea what it is, but you know, we could then pay these substitutes directly the hundred and twenty dollars a day or whatever. So it would be more attractive to come here and work for us than it would to be going through agencies.
Substitutes are a probably a national shortage. They are a regional shortage. I know that. We talk about that. We've talked about that a lot this summer in the superintendent's meeting, the county, where I think almost all of us are using the same agency. And in turn, substitutes want to stay the closest where they are or and also where they they have worked for, and they feel very comfortable. We have committed subs to that are, they're every day, they know they're going to go into a building. Because routinely every day, we have somebody that's, that's one person, not the same person, but routinely we have an absence in every building. It's going to be a tough year this way. And I would rather, to getting back to Keith's question, is that to have a more robust answer about what what our expectations are, what what our past has been during a normal year for substitutes and and then have a better answer for you at the first or the second meeting in August.
Yeah, I think Keith was just suggesting, hey, what if we hire five extra people to sit on the bench?
Are we talking teachers or aides?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying, look, while we know, I mean, what I'm hearing is, and I'm thinking from, you know, dealing with personnel issues as well, you know.
Yes, sir, we know that.
You know, I just think about like, how can you, at a board, we can do, we can help you guys out by bolstering, you know, like John said, a bench for you. It would, it would, you know, we would have to modify our budget or or approve some additional spending. But I was just trying to think of ways as we sort of go down this path that to make it easier for not only the administration, but but at the end of the day, the teachers in the classroom, if we have, if we give them something to sort of assist them, you know, and if there's nothing for this person to do, then we inject them into a class and maybe relieve some, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of ideas.
As the finance, as the finance chair, you're more than well aware of our six million dollar hole. And 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 this is extraordinary times, and that's why you have a reserve, reserve and a fund balance to bug those holes in those extreme circumstances. But we have to be, you know, we're still six weeks, seven weeks away from starting school. And so and there could be a lot of things that change. One of the things if we're, you know, that's constantly on our mind is if we're directed by the governor to go virtual. And we have a lot of aides, aide positions and secretary positions right now that we're advertising for. But I've still kept a freeze on there because I'm think, I'm hedging my bets because if we hire them, then we'll be paying them and they won't be in school. And they probably, a lot of them, you know, won't have a job. And so I'm playing that out. And it's real important for everyone who's in the listening audience, especially those parents, is to please apply to be a substitute teacher. Put your application in, email me if you want the information. Since most folks know what my email address is, W Herner Q C S D, we'll get the information out. But we were working behind the scenes. Now that we know, for the most part, seventy-eight percent was the number that I had on registration already. Once we get that that number, the principals to figure out what's in class, we'll know that. Then the next step is figuring out what how the teachers, how are teachers actually going to respond? How many are uncomfortable with what the plan is? You know, I'm feeling very good so far about what our teachers are thinking about your acceptance of our plan, our task force plan, our community's plan for opening up schools. We want to get back there. They want to get back there. But they want to feel safe. So if we can keep our numbers low from retirements, we've had four in the last week. Had another one today. We had three last Monday and then and then one, one today. We were managing all that. And we're also trying to keep the eye on the bottom line because that that number that if we hire more teachers, we hire a bench of teachers, we'll have to keep them in the system. And and we're down a hundred students. This is the first year we're on. Our total number is four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven students that we need to register. Last year, we were at fifty, right, right under fifty-one hundred at four thousand ninety-eight or something like that. We're still going down, and that's about four or five teachers a year. So.
More babies.
Well, I affirm, well, there's a lot of construction going on, and I'm praying that we're going to get, we'll get a lot of students.
Busy.
Sir?
Say, go ahead, John, get busy making those babies.
I'd ask you earlier today, then, I don't believe we had a nurse for each building before. Is that something we may, we should probably be looking at now?
We have, we have a nurse, Janet, you're on the call? You want to talk about, she just gave me a report on nurses. We just had her, our head nurse, and she's on the call. Marge, are you on the call?
She may not be able, she may be a participant.
Margie Regan.
Yeah, I don't know if she's a participant.
Margie's on the call, but she's not a panelist.
Okay, well, first off, I'd like to publicly thank Marge for all of her selfless service to to our students and our community for decades. She's going to retire. And but she was our lead nurse for our, and a medical advisor for our task force, but she's out there. And so we have to do a hiring there. But tell the board, Janet, please, about how many nurses we have and how you have them assigned.
Sure. So we do have a certified, four certified school nurses that oversee our health room assistants in buildings where we don't have a certified school nurse. And all of those health room assistants are all our ends. We have three certified nurses at the high school and the, including the academy. There are two at Strayer. There is one at the sixth grade center to Hickon Valley and Richland and QE. And we also have two at PAF.
Okay, so there's at least someone in every building that if a kid comes, that's, that's what I was worried about. Yeah. Okay.
There are. And then our certified school nurses also oversee all of our private schools as well.
And that's one thing that we're very cognizant of, that if a private school is in our system, we have, like St. Isidore's, and I know Rama Conboy, Dr. Conboy is on this call. But we provide nursing assistance there and faith Christians, since it's moved in into our neighborhood, we have to provide that assistance too. Correct, Janet?
That assistance would be overseeing immunizations and making sure that all of the height, weight, and vision checks are done. But we do not go in there every day to provide medication or anything like that. We follow what PDE requires us to follow.
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Dr. Harner, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
For some, some folks in the community have reached out to me, I guess they're listening in real time. So is is a bachelor's degree to be a sub? Is it, is it associate's bachelor's degree? How's that work for for people?
Barb, Barb Phillips, you're on the call. Please let her give the the very set answers to the.
If she's not a panelist, can we unmute her? I don't know.
Our Nancy, Nancy, former HR director, Ms. Edwards.
Sorry, Ed Buttons. Yeah, I am not the best person to ask because I haven't been responsible for HR for six, five, six years now. And so I would not want to give old information that is not up to date.
There's Barb on the bottom. She just came on.
She just came on.
Hi, yes, I'm here. So, so yes, all that's required, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All that's required is a bachelor's degree. Bachelor's degree only. And then they would file, they would still be hired through ESS. But that's all that's required. They, those with the bachelor's degree, then they would also go through, there is a new teacher training that's done through the IU in coordination with ESS. So it's like a two or three day training on, you know, the classroom management skills and things such as that. Once they're completed that, the IU will issue the emergency certifications for the these individuals. And the agreement is normally emergency certifications are only issued to individual school districts. But the IU and ESS have an agreement that the emergency certifications are good in all Bucks County to emergency sub.
Well, Keith, we'll send out a note in the next week out to all of all users, to parents and to parents and and let them know what our needs are and with all the requirements and points of contact. Because that's definitely one of our strategies that we have to have here, and every district has to have that because of the shortage of, the shortage of subs. Thanks, Barb.
Well, it's, so it's, it's people, you have to have a bachelor's in hand. It's not people who are pursuing a bachelor's degree.
That, that is, Barb, I.
I just, I just moved her, moved her back. So I apologize. I thought the question was over.
All right, that's fine. We can talk about later. Not a big deal.
I'll, I'll send it out, sir. Or Barb will send it out.
All right. Any other questions? We can get maybe moving on with the rest of the agenda. All right. Thank everybody for your patience. So next item that is on the agenda, just give me a moment here. We have some items that are for board action approval of the opening of Nighting Elementary for the 2021 school year. And there is a PDE resolution. Do I need to read that resolution?
You're going to need to vote on A and B and items separately, and item C is information only item.
So I have to vote on, we have to do a vote on each of those separately, you said?
On A and B, C is just information, but you need a separate vote for A and a separate vote for B.
All right. So then let's start with the approval of the opening of Nighting Elementary for the 2021 school year, 2020, 2021. So I'll need a motion to approve the opening.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Who was the second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
That was Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to, um, we're going to vote on the PDE resolution as presented. I'll do a motion for that.
So moved, John.
I'll second, Chris.
Discussion.
And this is just to purchase the the PDE, right?
No, no, this, this is.
This is that weird.
PDE, oh, I'm sorry. I read that wrong.
Yes, my only beef with it is I don't want to give emergency declarations for four years. As long as there's a clause that says reconsider over here.
Dr. Harner? Any idea about that?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Garden because he helped us with this. Jeff, are you there?
The, if you notice, it says the lesser of the emergency or four years. If you can, you can choose when the pandemic's over to set this resolution aside. That's that's just a statutory language that PDE suggests.
Okay, does that answer your question, John?
With this emergency declaration, it gives, you know, essentially Dr. Harner, if if an emerg, you know, if a ruling comes from Harrisburg, it gives him the the power to close the school without having to have a board meeting and get approval, correct?
But also, it also deals with providing alternative options when you're teaching as well. That's the primary purpose of the resolution because the school code wouldn't recognize virtual or hybrid. This gives you the opportunity to do those other methodologies as far as providing education under five ten point one. So it provides a lot of authority to districts you don't normally have during an emergency.
Would that include the live streaming question as well?
Live stream is just a methodology of providing virtual or hybrid teaching.
Okay.
But one of the, one of the advantages also in the association is Ryan has said he's good with it is for snow days. We can, if we have, this past year, I don't think I made a single phone call at five in the morning to anybody for a snow day.
I would be against any resolution that gets rid of snow days.
No, what the, what the resolution, well, what it does is allows us to go virtual for that day.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It allows us to ruin kids' snow days.
Come on, man, you gotta go out and make a snow, well, you can still do that. Just put a little mannequin up that looks like you. Just freeze frame your Zoom anyway.
Two hundred and fifty.
Okay, if the youngest kid in the house just keep clicking.
That's too funny.
If nobody else is concerned about the length of time, it just seemed odd, capricious and long.
Like your emails?
We can probably cheat.
Oh.
Good point.
That was a slam.
Boom. He knows I got.
I won't back off. I can't deny that.
I got nothing but love for his emails. I'm just giving him a hard time. Got to, got to break up the monotony a little bit.
That's right. Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay. All right. So then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The last item is just an information item. This is the first reading of the live stream video on school district property. So I recommend you go ahead and read through that when you have some time.
I did have some questions about this, though. I thought we were sort of moving away from this. Wasn't there legal concerns about this, Jeff or Dr. Harner?
Well, there's some consent required that may be necessary, but, and we'll come to that, but because theoretically, if you are a student sitting in class and someone is not going to be, you're not going to be on a screen because they're not going to be pointing to kids in the class. But your voice theoretically could be streamed out to your hybrid colleagues in the class, and someone can overhear it. So we're going to be working on some consent forms on that issue.
Like what colleges do all day long. Yeah, it's not like there's not blazing any trails.
And teachers would have to sign these consents as well?
No, because they're, they're, they're employees. It's not, they're not minors whose educational records might, because they the kids comment in class theoretically, if it's recorded, could be educational record. Teachers don't have educational records.
So can I ask how the teachers are on board with this? Have they, have they said yes about the idea of live streaming and all that?
I don't have the answer, but you have to speak to the administration.
I, I will tell you that Mr. Williams, I'm sure he's on the call. He has to share with me personally some of his concerns about live streaming, doesn't want it mandated. And that's out there for that. This gets the ball rolling for the conversation. So we can have it approved at the next meeting. But but I, Ryan has shared that there is some concern from the association with mandating live streaming.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, sir.
Can I ask what the concerns were? I'm assuming privacy as well.
It is, it was mostly, I believe, about what they, their, their personal practice. Some teachers would not like it, like to do it, and some teachers are awesome. I like to do it. Some teachers are awesome at it. We used to have a cyber program and of our own and our teachers are very good at it. We're very good at it, are very good at it. And, but they just don't want it mandated. And so that's where the concern was from the association.
Did we ever purchase those cameras? I know we had a discussion about it, but I, I don't remember if we actually ever approved or purchased those.
Joe, would you answer, answer that question?
Yeah, sure. Sorry. I just had a piece of ice in my mouth. Yeah. So actually, because of it's coming out of a grant funding, I had to get three quotes, which I just finished up the last one today. So we have three quotes and then business office should be getting that PO out. And from my understanding, they're in stock and should have a problem getting them in, in time for probably late August.
And, and where they can tape, tape their, their lesson by themselves and make it asynchronous. So it's not, the, the camera's not just for live streaming. They could be live streamed if they want. But most can use those cameras to tape, tape a less and then put it out there and then, then the student, and that's probably one of the biggest things that I'm, I've received in emails from parents. They want to there, there's, there's some who have said in, in our May survey, they wanted to have flexibility on when they, their students would be participating in class and others would like to have it set, here's first class, second class, third class. So teachers will have the ability to create what they, they prefer.
So is there a concern?
Be that, and I'm just trying to get to the idea of what the goal here is. Would the expectation from the administration be that the teachers are using it to flip their classroom and provide flipped instruction like, like what you're talking about? Or would it be that they would be using it to live stream as, as you said, mandate it? I'm not sure. What's the, what's the end result look like?
We're still in discussions with, with the, the association about what's expected and what's not. Ryan and the association, they've been incredible partners this spring. And so I, I, I wouldn't want to be held to, using the word mandate is a really strong word that the association is not good with, and I'm not there yet with our discussions. We still have to work on it.
Yeah, I think what I meant was what was, like, when you thought about this, what was the, what was the, what did the picture look like for how they would use them?
For, for, for cam, purchasing the cameras?
Yes.
Oh, so the, every teacher has the flexibility to present a class, tape a class, do it on their time schedule. We know that there are going to be some teachers that won't be, either they, they will be out. They have, they have sick days. They have vacation, they have days that they, uh, personal days. They're going to be out of the building. So they could have a class already set up to go that's right in Seesaw or right in, right in Canvas and the, our substitutes can use that. So right now it's building flexibility, building out our technology. I know you can appreciate that since that's what you teach and that's your world.
That's kind of why I was asking.
I know, there's no doubt in my mind that that's one of the reasons you had the question. But, but is to build our, our program and, and to give the teachers the resources so they can be all they can be for our practice.
One of their concerns that you're going to be sitting in your office with your fingers up in the Montgomery Burns position, monitoring their classes all day long with their cameras on or, or, you know?
Hopefully teachers know me well enough that I have a busy day.
Yeah.
I love to see them. I love to be out there with the kids, love to be in the classrooms and all that kind of stuff, but that, it, it's not that kind of oversight. There is some concern about that. It's a national problem right now, especially since the pandemic about cameras and live streaming or, or even taping. That's something, but we want to, we have to, the purpose of this conversation is, and to move it forward is to have a first reading of this policy and then, and then then work, fine tune it with our association.
But there is no intention to use it for teacher evaluations or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay, that's going with my weird way of saying
No, 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 no.
Would that even be legal?
It wouldn't be consistent with your collective bargaining agreement to use that as a mechanism for evaluation.
All right. Sounds like we got that pretty well cleared up. I'm, I appreciate the conversation around that because I know that's something that is pressing. And I believe Mr. Wean did a survey and forty, forty-nine percent of his membership are okay with it as an option. Thirty-eight point five don't believe in it, it should be used at all. And four point seven say they're okay with it. So I think the idea is that we are providing additional flexibility for our teachers and trying to accommodate them in whatever way we can.
Working with the, with Ryan, work and our teachers have been amazing this spring, this summer and, and, and task force participation, even though it's summertime. Very grateful. And, and I, I know the community is, and I know you are as a board recognizing all that they're doing for us.
Yeah, we definitely, we realize, teachers, that it, we are asking a lot of you guys this, this year. And, and it's certainly going to be a challenge. And I commit to you that we'll work with you guys through it.
So along, along that lines, I do, I mean, there are some good questions about the virtual component and, and the other things. Is there, I mean, from a, from a, a again, I don't know, if, if family signed up, do they sign consented? And, you know, like, I mean, in the hospital, we don't let people record what we're doing. Is there something that we, we do to protect us as a district from that?
Jeff, I'll let you handle the legal side of that.
We have the obligation to maintain confidentiality with educational records. So we will be getting consents from parents to recognize that to some extent certain elements of what might be an educational record can't be maintained in confidence because of the virtual component, the hybrid component. That's the purpose of the consent and release.
Gotcha. Now how about as far as restricting them from, you know, somebody recording it on their phone and then blasting it all over the internet?
Well, you're not going to be able to do anything. That may happen anyway because of the nature of technology, but we will include prohibitions to that. But, you know, what do you do? How do you enforce it? How do you know until it's after the fact?
Well, no, that's what I'm saying is if, if, if there's something we can do to, to just
Well, we will put the appropriate admonition in there about no transmission.
All right. Sounds
Thank you for the, they're great questions.
Yes, definitely very good questions. Okay, well, further ado, we're going to move on to our fiscal consent agenda. And we have on that agenda, the approval of PPE, essential items for purchase and the approval of the district tax, tax appeals for 2021. So I'll need a motion to vote on that. So moved. Somebody needs to second.
I'll second. John.
Discussion.
Real quick one, just looking at the second, third, or the first, second and third lines on here where there's face shields district purchased, isn't the county, are they only donating to the student and these would be for teachers then?
They're donating, they, they're donating more than we have students and enough to cover staff and faculty. But it, it's a gift and we're not, it was not part of our plan. Because there's, they, they can't, it would be an incredible ticket for the county to pick up.
So we're still buying, I mean, it only looks like 500 masks, so it's only $750. It didn't look like it's that big of a, a line item there. But then the, the next one down is the sanitizer stations with refills. Didn't we purchase like multiple 55 gallon drums of hand sanitizer that?
We have, we have two. And we have two and we have shared with the local municipalities, some of what we purchased back at the very beginning of this in March to the borough and other public service organizations if they didn't have it.
And like 400 Spencer stations, if I recall.
Yeah, it's $44,000 worth. Those are the only couple of things. I mean, it's, it's nice that you put the things that I was questioning all at the top of the list. Thanks for that.
Yeah, we're here to serve.
So the, this tax thing reminded me of the, the recent bill that, that Wolf and every, that came out of Harrisburg about and I don't know if, somehow I think we already put our, our tax bills up, but wasn't there some sort of a way to relieve the pay, the payment of taxes?
Or was it the fees of, the additional fees? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it was the penalties and the fees.
It was, it was allowing the late paying of taxes. That's what that was.
Theoretically would have extended the time for payment at a discount and payment at the face amount. Didn't do anything else other than that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is it, is that something that we should bring up at a later point of conversation? Is that, is that anything we can act on or?
Oh, I'll, I'll put it on a topic as the, the finance committee.
Okay. Because yeah, I mean, if, you know, people are hurting out there, if there's any way we can extend you know, us collecting our money. We've, we've got a larger
We, we had that discussion back in May, if you recall, or at least the finance committee did. And we'll, we'll put it back on the agenda again.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Great. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. The human resources consent agenda is next. And on that, we have professional staff, supervisory technology staff and support staff. So I'll need a motion to vote on those items.
Ron Jackson makes the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
My daughter was looking forward to have the same English teacher that her mother had this year, Mr. Mackey, who's retiring. So that's, that's kind of a tough one for us, but you know, I guess it is his time.
Well, Mr. Mackey, I've gotten to know him over the last seven years. He's a phenomenal English teacher, AP teacher. Member of a team. We've got somebody out getting trained this summer. Even though he, he gave us, just gave us a re, recent notice last Monday. Not this week, last week. Margie's there. Kim Kreider's there and she's our ELL teacher with a loss. And I think out of strayer just this evening, and matter of fact, I got it about an hour before the meeting started, was Ms. McFetrich did strayer.
I just personally want to thank all the, those that are the, the service to our district, those who are retiring. We really do appreciate your service and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion will carry unanimously. And that leads us to our board comments, new business.
So the funny article, not funny, but the one article that talked about the one Netherlands school opening with bubble machines. Is there any kind of fun thing that some of the buildings, especially with a, with a, you know, smaller children? Any kind of fun welcome back to school distraction device like, like they use that allowed the children to sort of have something to focus on other than, as Brian points out, things aren't like they used to be. Just a thought. Popcorn machine. Bubbles are better. You don't touch bubbles. They disappear. So forget the
For one of our eight schools, one is a brand new school. So that will be new.
Good point.
And I don't think Mr. Gutcher, if he's out there listening, that he plans on having bubbles. He'll probably have all kinds of neat things for the first day and grand opening and all that good stuff. Every, every school does a great thing for their kids when they come back.
Okay, it's, well, this, this year especially will be helpful.
Should we show them Lawrence Welk then? For those who are old enough to remember the bubble.
Without, without the organ.
Now we gotta have the organ.
That's true. And who doesn't like an organ? I always would gravitate to the, any organ that friends of mine's, you know, grandmother had or something. Yeah, who doesn't like playing those? Because especially when you can't play like me, but you can push buttons. Yeah. It's a good point.
Caitlin, I think we should also mentioned the lifespan since we did have that little
Yes. You, can you, can you share about that, Chris? I apologize. I almost did forget that. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, on Monday, after we had the tour with Dr. Damsker, we went over to the sixth grade center and Dr. Harner showed us around. And, no, we, we had a really good tour of how lifespan's been doing their summer camp and they went over how they did the how they've been basically have, they've had kids since March, since our school shut down. And they've had our kids, they've had zero new cases. And they've eventually got around to getting the kids to wear masks successfully. And it really looked like a good program. And, and we did ask them, you know, since our days are going to be shorter, that we're going to probably be sending them more kids for before and after school care for even longer periods of time. And they had mentioned to us that they're ready for us and they're willing to work with the district. And they work in our buildings and at the LifeQuest building across from the district offices. So I think Dr. Harner may have some more to share there, too.
I, I received from Nicole Fetterman who gave you the tour. I texted her right before to get her to come join us and give you the information to, to the three of you, David and you and Caitlin. But she sent me the, the financials of, and the cost for this year. So I'll get them out to our community. Our, our relationship with lifespan has been rather robust. In, in years past, it was before and after school. We also have a business education partner with, partnership with them where we have a pre-K program at, at Poff Elementary School that they, they run and we support it and we fund it through a state grant, no less. So it's zero cost to the, the district. And we also have a program at Richland Elementary School. And an interesting point of order for the audience also is that starting and here in the fall, we'll have a, a Head Start program, which is similar to a pre-K pro, program. It's a federally funded program. Head Start is where pre-K counts is a state funded program, but that's going to be at night at elementary school. And when I was out there this week, I saw they were pouring footers for their, the pre-K playground. So that was pretty cool. And, and that's going to be available to members of our community.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you for that information.
So there, so there's a lot of good questions in the Q and A. I don't know if somebody captures that. And maybe we could put that on a, maybe get some of the answers out there. I did copy it to a text file every time I, every once in a while, I have the latest 68. I can email it to It might be just good for us to answer that. And and so, and I, and I would commit to whoever asks the question, but I would absolutely feel a hundred percent safe coming in and subbing. So if I have a free day, I'll
I'll do it. By the way, I'm okay with coming back to regular meetings. I know that was asked.
I would, I would commit to that and help out and do my fair share.
Actually, I was going to talk about that regular meetings thing next. I, as a huge fan of passive aggressive sarcasm, I noticed one of the, the comments about us not meeting in person. And I, I just want to point out that it has been discussed and we are putting our money where our mouth is. And we do only want to do things if they're safe. And we did talk about coming back in person. Unfortunately, getting 300 people inside the district building to have this particular meeting is unreasonable in a live setting. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons why we are meeting, doing this virtually at this moment in time. We know these meetings are going to be so highly attended, you know, you, you can't do it face to face unless we're, you know, in the football stadium or something. We should show everybody how tough we are and do them in the un-air conditions QE classroom spaced at four and a half feet.
I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring my own fan. But no, on a serious note, I, I thought we weren't allowed. That's why we were doing it this way. Until mid-August.
When we were in yellow, we weren't allowed. But I think now that we're in green, I don't know.
I'll wear a mask.
I thought we're still, we're still limited to 25 people.
You're permitted to have live meetings as long as you follow the appropriate social distancing and masks and so forth.
I had suggested having a meeting, and I'm happy to do it in the QE classroom to kind of demonstrate that social distance, but then also zoom it out if that's, you know, if that's something, you know, I, I I'm a visual learner, so I would learn that way. But even when we do go back to the boardroom, I know we had talked a little bit about this before the meeting, but could we zoom out the, the I know we had talked a little bit about this before the meeting, but could we zoom out the, the meeting or, or stream out the meeting in some way, uh, live so that people can interact? And I know Joe had mentioned that before, but.
Well, research it and see and let you all know what we can do.
I will, I will let you all know.
I think this platform is great to reach the masses of especially for our home children and stuff. So it might be good to do a hybrid of that that we speak about. So something.
I will let, oh, I will let you know that the QE classrooms on Monday afternoon were 85 degrees inside too.
A smoker.
Ooh, I bet you, uh.
That's why we don't have school in the middle of July.
Well, didn't they miss about a week last year or year before because it was so hot over QE?
I don't recall. I, I know it's very hot. Um, I would doubt that we would not have school, but I know they have a lot of fans going on. But it was interesting that ventilation of the school is a concern by some of the, the faculty members there. And I'm sure you, you, you were just talking about it, 85 degrees, all that kind of stuff. And I know it's not August yet. September when we start, but there is some, some concerns about, um, ventilation. We have a report that we just put up on the website, I think today about our, uh, our other buildings are, and are the evaluation that we, we had conducted to make sure this, and it's attached to our FAQs on that, uh, the, uh, other schools.
And Dr. Damsker, I think, did comment on that. Sorry, Dave, that we did have, and I, I don't, I'm not going to use the proper term. There's some kind of ventilation though in QE, aside from just opening up those windows. Chris, you remember that?
They do, they do have fans, like these fan units in them. And he said that there is filters in them and they are on a more rigorous or more frequent, um, change schedule than they normally would be. I believe it was like six months before. Now they're doing it quarterly. Uh, Rob, Rob's on this call. He would probably, he answered that at the meeting on Monday.
Rob? Yes, we, we do quarterly changes in all HPAC units.
Which is more than you did last year, correct?
No, we, we've been doing quarterly changes for a long time now.
All right. Thank you for that information. Any other, Dave, did you have a comment that you wanted to make? Any other new business?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. So we have a public comment here that we wanted to save for the end. So, um, I would ask Terry, if you're going to be reading those, there's not a ton, like, I mean, there's, there's a lot. But could we attempt to try and, um, any duplicates, maybe just try to capture and highlight those? And let's do our best to get through these.
Sure. Yeah. I, I tried to, um, highlight those that were, we already talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, um, we have one here from Diane Ricciino from Richland Township. As positive cases in PA as compared to most other states are relatively low right now. At what point, if there is an increase in cases, will schools be required to offer virtual classes only? Is there a threshold that you will use as criteria for your decision? Okay. Uh, next public comment, Danielle Bensley, uh, from Richland Township. Uh, thank you for allowing us to express our thoughts, opinions and questions. I have very strong feelings about my children being in school with their peers and their teachers without all the restrictions, hand sanitizing, constantly masked and distancing. Uh, these are our kids, human interaction and keeping everything normal for them is the best thing we can do for our children who have been suffering in isolation for months. I have done my research and I believe the CDC recommendations are, are dangerous all around. Physically, emotionally, psych, psychological and mentally, we all have immune systems for a reason. And kids need all those germs to build their bodies strong and be resistant to sickness as they get older. Okay. Um, next one is, uh, Mary Bauer from Milford Township. Um, how safe are cho, are our children going back to school? Um, would you send your children to school? How concerned should we be about our kids being exposed to chemicals that the schools will be using to disinfect and clean? Todd Hipoff from Richland Township. The county is providing every student with a face shield, but from what I understand, not requiring a mask to be worn. CDC says there are no studies to show that the shields by themselves contain the droplets. Would it be safer to recommend that masks be worn in conjunction with the shield? Would you please issue guidance to do so to keep not just the children safe, but the administration and the teachers? Um, Stephanie Kuchinata. Um, hello, I'm a teacher within the district. I'm interested in your thoughts about requiring students to wear masks regardless if the three or six feet requirement is met in the classroom. Our classrooms are small areas, some with minimal ventilation. When a mask is removed and that student coughs, aren't viruses like COVID spread by the air? In addition, we have students not wearing masks in general due to exemptions. Shouldn't we require all other students to wear masks to protect themselves from those who are not wearing one in the classroom? In my opinion, masks aren't an option, aren't optional in these situations during a pandemic. However, we could provide mask breaks to help our students from wearing them all day.
Could we clean that up in our plan? It was a little, I, I, I think there's some confusion as to how our regular health and safety plan was coming back. And I believe even Dr. Damsker today was saying we should even wear masks beyond six feet when we're not having a dedicated mask break or eating.
He said that masks should be worn at all times except during mask breaks and when they're consuming food or drinking water.
Can, can we have our health and safety plan reflect that?
Well, it's, uh, we'll fix it on the FAQ. I think there's a, a glitch there. And I think they came from a misunderstanding, uh, misunderstanding on our, our part of something out there in, in our FAQ or not in the FAQ, but by administrator had made a comment. And that's why there's some concern. We talked about it this afternoon to fix it.
Is that a wrap?
Next, um, public comment, Melissa Fox from Richland Township. Um, she has three items here. One, um, is the board considering, especially with a shortened day, eliminating specials and electives to minimize switching of classes and kids, uh, passing in the hallway? Uh, two, will we stand on our own as a district when it comes to making decisions whether to open or close based on the local COVID numbers, facts and figures? And not just follow what neighboring school districts do? And three, um, what happened to bringing in all the special ed children with IEPs? Um, and letting them benefit from face to face teaching? In my opinion, that frees up virtual learning online, I'm sorry, virtual online teaching for the majority of the school district. To be able to virtually move from class to class without the worry of violation of fate. Next one is from Mary Marrow from Richland Township. Um, since the doctors say the kids should be wearing masks if less than six feet apart, um, what is going to be done about students that request accommodations not to wear masks? Um, this is putting others at risk. Um, Melissa Fox, uh, Richland Township. Can special, um, special and elective teachers help out with subbing in other main subjects? They are paid employees. Um, if, if their class is not going on, can they be helping out subbing in other classes? And that, that's pretty much the majority of the, of the public comment. Um, there are some things on here, but they were already covered with the, um, conversation that, um, Ms. Mitchell had earlier with everyone.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, I think we did do our best here to try to, I tried my best and I, and I do apologize if there was a question that was asked that didn't get answered. Um, but I do think that we, we, you know, got through a good majority of those items. So thank you all for your patience on that. And, um, before I, I go to our adjournment here, I, oh, Dave, did you raise your hand? Oh, sorry. Um, again, I just wanted to thank, thank everyone for their patience through this, you know, we are asking a lot from everyone. Thank you for, to the administration as well as, as our staff for being patient. I, I get daily texts from friends who want answers, you know, and, and please to be patient with us as we're trying to work through. There's so many different situations that we're, we're providing details on, and we hope to get that to you all as soon as possible. Okay, um, before we adjourn, I will be sending board members out a link for an executive session that I would like to have. And, um, so you can look forward to that. Other than that, I would just need. I'm sorry?
Tonight?
Yes, tonight, at, directly after this meeting.
I would like to thank Dr. Damsker too.
Yeah, absolutely. He, he's so busy right now. The fact that he took the time to talk with us is really, I think, super important and, and we value his time.
Thank you guys.
All right. So I'll just, uh, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
And I shall second.
Double second.
Discussion here.
We're going to fight over who seconded for a little while.
Exactly. We're going to fight.
Well, again, board members, look out for that separate link that I'm going to be sending you all. So I'll see you in a minute. And, um, thank you to the public for joining us for this very important meeting. And please look forward to more information for our subsequent meetings.
You need to do an all.
We need to adjourn.
Be adjourned.
Yes, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Hope you guys have a great night.
Bye guys.